Now come to order, the clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
And Councilmember Leone.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of March 20th, 2018. The consent agenda consists of one item, and that is authorization to hold an executive session. I have received no requests for removal from the council. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Council, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now adjourn to executive session. Their money well. Well, tell me a little bit about your take on public safety.
That is one of the most important things that I feel a city does, is provide public safety for our citizens. And I think we as a council in general have really focused on that in some of the things that we've done, bringing the ambulance services in-house and making sure that our citizens weren't relying on a monopoly business out there, a for-profit business, to ensure that they got the proper care. So that was one of the things that I was very, very happy with that we did. I think it's important to our citizens. I also think the fact that we're looking so hard at the staffing as we grow and making sure that we are keeping up with that, we have people that are helping us to make sure that we're keeping up with that. Because again, that's one of the most important things that we do for our citizens, is to provide public safety.
Yeah, so we need to make sure that we keep those response times low, don't we?
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And so tell me a little bit about, I'm going to change subjects here.
Sure.
Tell me a little bit about what you've been doing to make sure that your neighborhoods are as good as they can possibly be.
So one of the things I like to do is drive around the district. I like to look for things that might not be up to par if that happens to come across. We have very responsive city staff. They're amazing at addressing these things. But you know, the roadway improvements that we're doing right now, while they're a little bit of a pain to get through, obviously, it's not a road construction project, it's not. They're going to be very important for our growth and the increased traffic that's coming through this. I'm very happy that we're getting that done now before it gets to a point where it becomes worse.
So you've got the roadway projects going on, especially 75th Avenue.
Yes.
And then you've done some work with neighborhood pride in your community.
I love neighborhood pride. Neighborhood pride, in my mind, is one of the most amazing projects that the city does in going out and helping some of the neighborhoods that might need a little bit of a touch-up, might need a little bit of help. For those who are viewing that don't know, we always ask the resident to help in some way, be out there, maybe doing a little bit of painting, maybe doing something to help. And if you're not able to, that's fine too. Maybe just sit out and encourage those that are helping you. But the turnout is amazing. I've watched neighborhoods in a matter of hours go from, just transform into something absolutely amazing.
Yeah, and so how many volunteers were at your last organization?
So the last one had over 500 volunteers.
Wow.
You couldn't even find a place to park on the street, and it was absolutely an amazing event to watch. Absolutely incredible.
Yeah, that is incredible. So with all those volunteers, how many homes were you able to work on?
There were 21 homes, I believe, that we actually gave complete facelifts to.
Wow, that is such great attention to neighborhoods.
Yep.
You know, and that's really what it's all about.
I agree.
What's happening in your front yard, what's happening in your backyard. That's the strength of local government.
I agree, I agree.
Well, thanks for being here today.
Thank you for having me.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
It was nice to hear what's going on in Palaverdy.
Thank you.
You know what I want to talk to you about? I know that there's a lot going on in the Ironwood District, but I want to talk about your role as the council liaison to Veterans Affairs. I know that some big things happened this year. Please, fill us in.
Well, you graciously appointed me to that position, and my role was to make sure that the Veterans Memorial got done on time and to have the ribbon cutting or the rededication for Veterans Day. My main role was to make sure that that happened. And so I worked very closely with the Veterans Board to make sure that we would keep them and everybody else that was involved in this project on task. And so that was my major role in this effort. We got it done by Veterans Day. We had a wonderful crowd turnout. It was quite a spectacular sight. But let's make no mistake about this. This was clearly your vision. This was your dream, and without your support, this would not have happened. So while I played a role in this, it was really your effort that made this happen.
You are very, very kind, but you were so active and so diligent and so on-the-spot with everything that we needed. It would not have happened without you.
Well, thank you. I know that, what does this Veterans Memorial mean to the city of Peoria? It shows that you and the city council and the city staff really value our veterans. And I think that's an important message. And I think that when people come to visit the memorial, they'll see, with everything that's been accomplished there, and once you come out there, you see the beauty in this area. It has a, the water has a calming effect. But I think the focal point of the entire memorial is the helicopter. I think that as we, you know, as veterans come out and see it, they're going to be drawn to the helicopter. You can see it as you're driving into Rio Vista, and when you get out to the memorial itself, it's quite an amazing sight to see. And I think that that is set apart predominantly for our Vietnam veterans. And I think that the plaque that you wrote was quite amazing. I had friends in the Vietnam War, some didn't come back, and some did come back. And for all those that came back, the one compelling story they always told me was that they never really felt that they were welcomed home properly. And so I think the plaque that you have there, the last line says, "Welcome Home." I think that's very meaningful to them. It's a wonderful sight, I'm very proud of it. A lot of things are going on in the Ironwood District, but I think that's what I'm most proud of. I hope that it becomes a destination for people, and then when people come to visit Peoria, they will want to make that a place that they want to see, because it's something that the city should be very, very proud of.
I know, I am very, very proud of it. You need to tell us one more thing about that wall. The new addition to the wall on the north side of it is a place for people to honor their loved ones.
Yes.
So tell me about that.
Well, I think, I know you bought a plaque for your father, I bought one for mine. At the very reasonable cost of $125, you can memorialize a friend, a parent, a loved one on the back of that wall. And it gives their rank, it gives the name, the branch of service, and the years that they served. I know I saw my dad's name at the rededication on the back of the wall, and it was very meaningful to me. It'll be here, that name will be on that wall long after I'm gone, but my children will be able to see it, and my grandchildren will be able to see my father's name on that wall. So I think we have enough for over 400 names on the back of that wall. And again, for $125, you could memorialize a loved one for many, many years.
Well, I just want to thank you again for all the work that you did on the Veterans Memorial, for all the work that you do on behalf of Peoria for all veterans, and for all the work that you do in the Ironwood District. It's really great.
I love my job. Thank you, thank you for those nice comments, and I'll continue to work hard for my district and for the city.
Carlo, thanks for being here today. I understand that a lot of things have been going on in the Pine District, so please, tell me about some of the development, the new roads, all the exciting things that are happening in your district.
Thank you, Kathy. First thing I want to say is on the new business in the Pine District, you get the TYR Technical. That is where they make bulletproof vests. To my understanding, they're going to be putting about 300 employees on in there. And it's going to be a great business for the city of Peoria and the people that work in Peoria. Then we get the QuickTrip that's going in there, it's got a gas station, and I understand it's got a car wash, and also that's going to be probably about 50 employees there. We also have new homes coming in on Northern and Butler, 99th, Northern and Butler, 89th Avenue and Olive and Butler, and 103rd Avenue, Olive and Northern. These are all very new streets, and all new homes going in there, and it's going to be just great for the residents. These are all the ones that's going in at the Pine District, and it's great. The people like the new streets that's going in, they like the business that's going in, and I think they're all pretty well happy with it. And I am also happy with that we're doing some work in the Pine District, and we've got about 300 or 400 acres left to build, and I think that we should be able to fill those up within the next four years. Thank you.
So you've got new roads, you've got new parks, you've got new employers. Wow, a lot of really great, exciting things happening. And plus, if you don't mind, I know that you have been having some great success with your ParkFest. Tell me a little bit about the ParkFest that you've had this last year.
We've got a ParkFest in the country middles, which is great. We get about, oh, maybe 300 or 400 people show up.
Wow.
We have, we give away bikes, these four bikes, and we have the police there, and they're teaching the kids how to ride a bike, and they get a helmet. We have the fire department there, and I think it's important for the kids and for the parents to come out and see just what Peoria does for the families.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. It's so important. Everything in the Pine District, it sounds to me, is citizen-centric. It's about jobs, it's about play, it's about transportation, it's about making sure that they have a great quality of life. And that's a wonderful thing. So thank you for all that you're doing for the Pine District, and thanks for being here with us today.
And thank you for inviting me.
I am so excited to hear what is going on in the Mesquite District. And I know one of your priorities has been a balance of amenities and city services in the northern part of the city. So please, tell me what's happening.
Okay, well, this is such an exciting time for Peoria and for the Mesquite District. We have, you've said it so many times, and we've all talked about how much development is yet to happen in Peoria. And so much of that development is happening in the northern part of Peoria and the Mesquite District. And so one of the things that we have to look forward to right now is our Community Park Number Three. And so all of the citizens in that area are anxiously waiting this Community Park Number Three, and being able to have lighted fields and facilities to be able to bring city services north. So this park's going to be the most beautiful park in the country. I'm absolutely convinced that that's going to happen, and it is going to offer so many amenities and scenic views that are going to be unique and special to Peoria. And we're known for that. And people all over are talking about how beautiful our trail system is. And that's going to be a big part of this park. So with that, when we're talking about developing a piece of property like this, we have to be very sensitive. A big part of that is being sensitive to the cultural history and the archaeological findings, the artifacts that we have to document and protect and preserve. And with that comes working with a lot of layers of government. And so we're in that process, and you know that takes more time.
Yes.
And so, but it's a very important part of that development process. So as we move forward, we have to go through that entire permit process. So we're looking at starting construction in 2018. That'll be an 18-month construction time, so we should be looking forward to a park actually coming to life in the spring of 2020.
I can't wait for that celebration.
I can't wait. It's going to be fantastic. And again, it is long-awaited, and people are still looking forward to it. One thing I'm really excited that I want to share is that in an effort to continue to bring city services north and keep up with the growth, we are working, I've been working with community services, have been working with the different management companies of the various communities in the Mesquite District, and there's a lot of those. And they have been opening their doors to the city of Peoria to be able to service our citizens.
Wow.
It's fantastic. So we are able to bring the sustainable university classes up north, we're able to bring different gardening classes, youth activities, adult activities, all to the various communities. So not only are they making these available in partnership with Peoria to their citizens, but in some cases, they're opening it up to other citizens throughout the city that aren't necessarily right there in those communities. So we're looking at things in a totally different way, and being creative, and working in partnership to be able to service our citizens so they don't have to travel to our other beautiful facilities, Rio Vista and Pioneer Park. So this is a way for us to make that happen. And we'll be ready for that park when it comes, but it'll be the first phase. And then we'll be working towards how do we develop a community center. But in the meantime, these partnerships will be so important. Community Services is doing a fantastic job. Our retirement communities, our family communities are all part of this process and pitching in to make it happen.
Gosh, that is so impressive.
So exciting.
So exciting. You have been working hard. Oh my goodness, and all for the benefit of all of our citizens. They have been needing city services and amenities for such a long time. So congratulations on everything that you've been doing. It's wonderful, and it's a great way to end out this year. So thanks for being here, thanks for letting everybody know what's going on in the Mesquite District.
Thanks for having me.
Local government touches our lives every single day, and as your mayor and city council, we work daily to ensure our city is the best that it can be for every family that calls Peoria home. Whether it is through efforts in public safety, roadway and infrastructure improvements, park and trail upgrades, prudent fiscal management, or sensible growth policies that protect the future of our city, we are proud to contribute to the exceptional quality of life that Peoria has long been known for. Thank you for joining us today for another edition of Peoria Pulse.
Do you remember how we met?
Of course I do, which I'm gonna tell you anyway because it's part of the game. So get in with it.
Very well. Once upon a time, there was a lonely man in a lonely city.
Oh, God, take me now.
What's wrong?
Just get to the good part and make it snappy. I've got a hot date waiting for me backstage and she's a real doll face.
Okay. Well, once upon a time, this lonely man walked into a used magic store and met the one person who had changed his life forever.
I'm kind of a big deal.
I'm sorry, my little friend. It wasn't you. It was an old magician.
Where do I come in?
Well, in the back storage room, the magician kept all kinds of toys and trinkets that he would not sell to the general public. These were his most prized possessions.
Right, so obviously...
And in the far back, he kept what he called, very tenderly, his junk pile.
What?
And in the far, far, far back room is where he'd set aside you.
Right, so obviously you saw that there'd been some kind of a mistake or I'd been mistreated and I had some kind of a twinkle in my eye, right?
No. I bought you because you were on sale. And he said you could talk.
Well, at least tell me that the shop was in Paris.
No. It was in Phoenix.
What? No. You mean you bought me from some cuckoo old Merlin wannabe in a dusty junk shop in the desert? I sure hope my date didn't hear that. Thanks a million, Morty, I'm outta here.
Are you sure you wanna go?
Well, let's just say, all the great men in the world are dead except one and I'm not feeling well.
How about this time slot? Thursday night, May. Case of death. Reserved for those special shows on the way out the door. Just a pack of men. Just wait for us in droves. Got any bright ideas? Yes, what is it?
George would like me to help you clean your dressing room. How does it work?
What?
How do you make him talk?
Trade secret. Be careful with those.
I've got the boxes outside. I have to put them together first.
Boxes?
Yes.
Why would you need boxes?
George didn't tell you? I guess the theater can't pay you anymore and you can't live here anymore.
Take that, you rotten scoundrels! Oh, away from me, you fools!
Get back, you ruffians, for it is I, the amazing Mortimer with his companion, Sir Thomas of Mesa, who shall thwart your evil plans and bring about your everlasting doom. Captain. What's our next move?
They're gonna surround it. Let's get behind the barricade and wait for reinforcements.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Oh, no. What shall we do? What shall we do?
Pull yourself together, man!
Sorry, this is the first action I've ever seen.
It's okay, I've got a plan.
What's your plan?
Trolls.
Trolls?
Yes, under that bridge over there. Just use your magic to summon trolls here to help us win this battle.
Use my magic?
You are a magician, aren't you?
No.
Oh, no. Oh, no, no. We're doomed now!
Sir, what shall we do? They're closing in.
There's only one thing left to do.
What?
Run!
Yes!
Come on, get up, go!
Well, I must say, you've been given a fine imagination. What do your parents do?
I lived with my dad and it was nice. He used to play with me and we'd tell stories about dragons and battles. We would always win.
Used to, what happened to him?
He got really sick and he died. I don't really like to talk about it.
I'm sorry.
Uncle George doesn't like to tell stories. I live with him.
I'm sure he takes very good care of you.
Yeah.
Hey, kid. Morty got you doing his chores?
No, I'm supposed to be helping him move out.
What?
It's okay. I'm moving out too. Uncle George told me about this school on a ranch. Told the kids live and go to school together. He's gonna drive me over to go look at it tomorrow.
Sounds nice.
It could be fun.
You know, kid, sometimes in life, it seems like we don't get a fair shake or we wish things could stay the same forever and they just can't. But I've just got to say that as tough as it is sometimes, life has a way of working out for the best. You believe that for us and we'll believe that for you, okay?
Okay.
Now that I've doled out my pontiferous wisdom, do you have any questions for me?
How does it work?
Magic!
Really? I have to go.
Well, it's nice to have made a new friend.
Yep.
Thomas! I think you need someone to keep you company more than I do. Stretch out your arms. Take care, old friend. See, this is how it works. There's very little mystery to it. Yeah.
Bye, Mortimer.
Goodbye, Thomas. Take care.
Watch our patrols.
Yeah. I will. Goodbye.
I am the Library and Cultural Services Manager for the city of Peoria. And this library for us is really the fabric of this community. We wanna be about educating. We wanna be about literacy. We wanna be about community. We wanna evolve as our community evolves and do what we can to serve our community best. Everything that is done at the library is free. We have youth programming, which we do everything from storytime, crafts, arts. We do educational literacy programs. We have great adult programming. We have computer classes that assist people with learning new programs. We have a teen program, which is phenomenal, which we're really trying to grow. We feel that our teens are really underserved and we'd really like to see that population grow at both of our libraries. It's all about creativity. It's all about using your imagination. The library is a place where you can be and do anything you want. We are open more than any other library system in Miracle Park County. We're open every single day, seven days a week. Come and visit us, see what's going on here at the Peoria Libraries.
Hi, I'm Peoria Mayor Kathy Carlet. Thanks for joining me for another edition of Peoria Pulse. Throughout the city of Peoria, from border to border, we are connected. As residents, we are bound together by a common thread. Every person who resides here is part of the unique character that makes up our great city. That's why I've launched this series called "I Am Peoria." This is an opportunity to hear the stories and learn more about the people who live, work, and play in Peoria. As we kick off this year with our first episode, I wanted to give viewers a chance to hear my story. I'm proud to be able to introduce you to Mr. Ed Oliver. He is typically the magic behind the camera, but today, he is front and center. Ed, welcome to the show.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. I understand you took office as Peoria's first female mayor in January of 2015, and that's quite a historical feat. Tell me, how did you get here? Did you have political aspirations?
Well, first of all, it's really an honor to be Peoria's first female mayor. It's an incredible honor. But political aspirations, no. No, I actually never had political aspirations and even to this day, I don't have political aspirations. What I wanted to do was make an impact on the city of Peoria, the city that I love. And so, to tell you a little bit about how I actually got here to this seat on this day, I'm gonna start way back. I was born in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, quite a long time ago, as a matter of fact. And my family moved us to Phoenix, Arizona, when I was a little girl, 1969. So I've seen some big changes in the Valley of the Sun. I grew up running around in the desert. And then, when I got older, I decided to spread my wings a little bit and I picked up and moved to Dallas, Texas. And once I was there and gainfully employed, I met a Texan and we got married and started raising a family. And we moved to a little town on the outskirts, a suburb of Dallas, called Plano. And I lived in Texas for 17 years. They were great years. It was a wonderful place to be. But I never stopped thinking about Arizona as my home. I missed the desert, I missed the mountains, I missed my family. So I was able to get my Texan out of Texas, which I think is a rare occurrence.
Absolutely.
And we moved back to Arizona in 2001 and that's when we moved to Peoria. So there were a lot of great experiences there. But when I moved back to Peoria, I got a job at Central Arizona Project. And as fate would have it, I started working in the same department, the Communications Department, where then, at the time, a brand-new council member, Bob Barrett, worked. And we became friends. So he had been on the Peoria City Council for about a year by that time and we just started talking about city issues. And I found them to be so interesting. Just everything about municipal government really interested me. How a city can grow, how it could turn out, how it might not turn out if you make different decisions, how the leadership makes a big decision, or, excuse me, a big difference in the future. There were just so many variables. And I found it really interesting. So we did that, you know, we had those long conversations for probably about three years. And then the city council member in the Mesquite District, where I lived, was retiring. And Bob Barrett asked me if I wanted to run for office. So it was something I had actually never, ever considered in my life, running for political office. But I found myself saying yes. I said yes. And I ran for office that next year. And in 2005, I became the council member for the Mesquite District, the fastest-growing district in the city of Peoria, right at the very height of growth. district in the city of Peoria, right at the very height of growth, economic growth, not only in Peoria, in the entire state of Arizona. We were one of the fastest-growing cities, and that was one of the fastest-growing areas. And I just jumped right in. And that's how I got to where I am sitting today. You know, I was the council member for Mesquite for almost 10 years, and then Bob Barrett became the mayor of the city of Peoria. And when his term was over, I ran for mayor. And I have been the mayor since 2015.
Wow. Well, you spoke about you've seen rapid change, major change throughout the valley all the years that you've been here. And you also referenced your kind of past history and career. How have those things prepared you to meet the demands of leading a city that's as large and growing as Peoria?
Well, that's another bit of a story. I, you know, I've held leadership positions in various companies, a Fortune 500 company, a commercial real estate leasing company. I worked at Central Arizona Project for 13 years. And all of those things gave me a really solid business background. And they probably helped me to do my job today. But they are not the reason that I ran for this office, and they are not the reason that I do the job that I do today. So the reason that I do is because of a story I'm going to tell you. When I lived in Plano and I was raising my children, something happened in that town that just changed everything. It was a total game changer. Plano was just a nice, little, quiet, sleepy suburb. People got in their cars, and they drove to Dallas for work every single day, and then they came back every single night. And then Ross Perot moved the headquarters of his company, EDS, Electronic Data Systems, from downtown Dallas to Plano. And he created this huge campus in our little suburb. And then other corporate headquarters followed him. J.C. Penney's moved from New York, and Fredo Lay moved in, and PepsiCo moved in. And now there's many more than that. But they changed the face of that city. They started donating to parks and to the arts and to kids', you know, sporting teams and to schools. They contributed in so many ways, the quality of life in that city just blossomed. And besides that, people had gainful employment, quality jobs. And the children grew up thinking, aspiring, knowing that they could get those quality jobs and take care of their families. They could go away to college and come back, get a great job, stay in the city of Plano to raise their children. So generations were affected. I wanted that for my kids. I wanted my kids to be able to go away to college, come back, and know that in the city of Peoria, they could have gainful employment, and they would come back here and raise their kids here and keep my grandkids close to me forever. That's the reason that I do what I do. I just have a heart for economic development. I know the changes that can happen and how much it affects the culture and the quality of life of the citizens in our city, and that's what I want for the city of Peoria.
And that's a great picture of the possibilities. And speaking of that, and as we move forward, where do you see that growth taking us?
Oh, my gosh. The city of Peoria is in such a great place right now. We have been fiscally sound for many, many years and growing in a nice, neat, organized way from the south to the north, but we're only halfway built out. We are right at the crossroads of who we could possibly be. And that's an exciting place to be. You know, are we going to stay a bedroom community? Are we going to be a place where people can have employment and, you know, where their children will come back and generations will stay and stay, and the quality of life will continue to be exceptional? Who are we going to be when we grow up? So if we look at who we've been so far, we've really reached a stage of adolescence. And now it's time for us to go into adulthood. And so creating who we're going to be as adults, who we're going to be at maturity, is, you know, you only get chances like this once in a lifetime to make such a great effect on something that you love and for the people that you love. So it's really wonderful to know what the future of the city of Peoria is going to be and to be able to have some effect on that.
That's amazing. And speaking of your heart and your heart for Peoria, I'm sure you have a lot of fond memories. Share one of those memories that really speaks close to your heart about your love for Peoria.
So many wonderful things have happened to me since we've, my whole family has moved back here. But very recently, we were able to expand the veterans memorial that we have at Rio Vista Park. I just had a vision for how it could be a place where people could come and really, truly meditate and understand how much Peoria thanks them for their service, a place where veterans could really be appreciated. And so we really expanded that entire area. We added a Vietnam Veterans Area, so many things that we did to grow that. But we also added an area where people can put the name of their loved ones and memorialize them forever. And I was able to have my father's name inscribed on that wall so that he will be there forever. And the service that he was so proud of will always be with anybody who walks by that wall. They will always know that he was a proud man who served the country that he loved. For me, that is the best thing that I could have done in the city of Peoria.
That's great. Well, thank you so much for sharing your story. It's a pleasure to be here to help you do that today.
Thanks for joining us for another edition of Peoria Pulse. Join us again next month to hear another "I Am Peoria" story. This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Benzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council Liaison Acosta.
Here.
And Council Liaison Gaytruss.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of March 6, 2018. We have two items on our study session agenda this evening. Community Facilities District is the first one, and Human Services Resource Center Exploration is the second one. So I will turn it over to City Manager Jeff Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you on both of these items. And as you had mentioned, we'll start with the discussion of Community Facilities Districts. But more importantly, probably the way to look at this is really a discussion about growth and the financing of growth. The topic of Community Facilities District is referring to a financing tool. It's a name that is a little vague, but the reality is it has important implications to the city and a number of important policy decisions that we want to make sure that you are aware of. So just a quick tee-up primarily for the audience here today. In Peoria, when we talk about the cost of development or the cost of growth, we're referring really to two different things. One is the cost of operating services, and so the cost for supporting our police officers and firefighters, our recreation staff, providing solid waste and the like. That is largely supported through our general taxes or through utility rates. But there's another cost as we finance new residential and commercial growth, and that is the cost for capital improvements, those large improvements of infrastructure such as streets and our water lines and our parks that also help to make Peoria for what it is. And that's a lot of the discussion we wanted to have here because, as we talk about that, a lot of issues come up about how should we be paying for this? Who should be paying for that kind of capital improvements? For how long? And what happens if the development doesn't go as we have expected? And as a result of that, we want to talk about specifically a major tool that is being used for the master-planned communities that we anticipate in the future, and that is something called a Community Facilities District, or CFD. We'll use that term a lot. CFDs are not inherently good or bad. They are just a financing mechanism. But if they are administered incorrectly, could have serious implications on the residents in those areas or on the city itself. And so for that reason, we wanted to introduce our Deputy City Manager Katie Gregory, as well as our Chief Financial Officer Sonia Andrews, to talk about CFDs today.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to just open it up a little bit, and then I'll pass it on to Sonia to talk through some of the key things, and we'll kind of go a little bit back and forth throughout the presentation. But as Jeff indicated, this evening, we're going to provide a brief overview of some of the key elements associated with Community Facility Districts. And the purpose of this presentation is really twofold. First, we're going to talk through the general mechanics of utilizing a CFD for development projects. And then we will also want to revisit a little bit of Peoria's policy. As you know, there's been some changes to our policy, but we want to revisit some of those recent changes and talk about, a little bit about, the formation process and also highlight some key policy considerations for the council to discuss. And while this presentation is really for your information, it should also be noted that we do have and are currently working with an owner and a developer up in the Lake Pleasant Heights or the Mystic Development. And we do anticipate that we're going to have a submittal of a CFD application very soon. So this is timely in the sense of trying to give some information on that, and it would be a good time to review that policy. So first, we're going to talk a little bit about what CFDs are. And just to start, I'd like to just kind of give you a visual representation of how kind of the funding of projects or how infrastructure is funded by a developer and how that works. So generally, landowners who wanted to develop land are expected to pay for the infrastructure needed to service their land. And typically, developers then have relationships with various banks or lending institutions where they're able to then get their capital used to fund the projects that they need to do. And depending on the infrastructure, we also have a mechanism that you've heard about and that we've used, which is called impact fees, that sometimes we can provide credit for some of that infrastructure that's also required, and that's for things such as water and wastewater and streets. But there's another option for developers, which is called a special taxing district, which is what a CFD is. Once a taxing district is formed, and usually that's prior to any development on the property, bonds can be sold, and the developer can use those funds, there we go, developers can use those funds to pay for the immediate acquisition and construction of improvements, and then put those payments back onto the property owners within that development. And they can use that, the mechanism they can use is either a tax rate, an additional tax rate, or a special assessment, and we'll talk, or both, and we'll talk about those a little bit further. But I'd like to have Sonia kind of walk you through a little more specifically some of the key elements of a CFD, the life cycle, kind of how that works, and some of the benefits and risks associated with a CFD.
Thank you, Katie. So there are five key elements to a CFD. First of all, as Katie has mentioned, the primary use of a CFD, it's formed to finance public infrastructure, like roads, streets, most commonly on vacant land. And in Arizona, it's most commonly used for master-planned communities. A CFD is also a legal entity. It is a separate political subdivision with its own powers to enter into contracts. It can be sued. It can sue. It has power of eminent domain, so it's an own-legal, separate entity. It is also governed by a board of directors. And with the new legislation, the composition of the board of directors has changed. As you, the council knows, we have two CFDs, and the council is the board of the CFD right now. With new legislation, the board will be council plus two or five appointed members, and we will talk more about that later. Another element of a CFD is it also has to be within the city boundaries. It cannot cross over between two cities or into a county, you know, area. And finally, it can issue debt, like Katie said. We can issue geobonds, which is supported by tax, or special assessment debt, or it can actually issue revenue bonds, but most typically is geobonds or special assessment debt. This next slide, what I want to do is take you through a life cycle of a CFD. So there are really three parties to a CFD, the developer, the city, and ultimately the residents within the CFD. So in the first year, the developer is focusing on pre-development activities. They are entitling land, they're getting their financing, they're working with the city, they're usually the primary property owners, and they're usually working with the city to form the CFD. So they're submitting the petition to form the CFD, they're submitting the application. The CFD, the city is facilitating the formation, working with the developer, reviewing the application. So assuming this is a 10-year development, year two to year 10, once the CFD is formed, the developer will be constructing the infrastructure. They may not be the developer that's building the actual homes, so they're selling land to the builders, and the builder is doing the vertical development. So between the developer and the builders, they're building and constructing. And at the same time, the CFD has been formed, the city is, through the CFD, issuing debt. There may be an initial bond sale. There may be one or more additional bond sales. And depending on interest rates and bond structure, they may be refunding bonds as well. And since the CFD is formed, the city is also working on creating board meetings, developing budgets, collecting taxes, managing debt, issuing annual reports. That goes on for well beyond the 10 years of development. That could go on for 20 years or 30 years, depending on when the debt is issued. And at the same time, the engineering department is accepting the infrastructure being constructed by the developer and also taking over the maintenance of the infrastructure.
Sonia, can I ask you a question? What is the, are there limitations on the types of infrastructure that are allowed in this, and where is that formulated? And is it put into a contract? How does that work?
There's actually not that many limitations on the infrastructure, according to the state statute. There's quite a big list of infrastructure that a CFD can construct, aside from roads, water, sewer, parking facilities, parks and recreation facilities, civic buildings, all that, streetlights, all that can be constructed with CFD financing. The city's policy, which Katie will go over later, restricts the use of CFD to large regional infrastructure, and we will talk about that later. There are reasons why the city council, back in 2014, actually revised the policy to allow CFDs for just large regional infrastructure and not, you know, local intract infrastructure. And like I said, Katie will go over that later.
Sonia, the one caveat is it's public infrastructure.
Yes.
That's the one restriction. It's got to be public infrastructure that's being built.
Able to be used by everyone, even outside of this master-planned community.
Correct.
That's correct. Yes, thank you very much. It has to be public infrastructure, and the city has to be able to maintain that as public infrastructure.
Thank you.
And finally, in this little life cycle, the residents, you know, they're the third party in this, they eventually buy the homes in the CFD, and they're eventually paying for the debt the CFD issues through property taxes or special assessments. And this slide just tells, shows you that there's value to CFDs. Over time, there's growth in land values as the land is being developed. There's also building and economic development activity that happens in a successful CFD as, you know, the activity goes on. So I want to go over with you the next few slides, some of the general benefits of CFDs as well as some of the risks and considerations of CFDs. So the city benefits if there is a successful CFD because it may promote economic development goals. A CFD may create commercial areas for development. It may advance city infrastructure projects. It can offer higher-quality developments with added amenities and aesthetics. How it can do that is because the CFD is financing the infrastructure, it may free up funding for the developer so the developer can then add additional amenities and aesthetics to their development. And lastly, but most importantly, the city's financial exposure is limited. The debt issued by the CFD is not city debt. The city has no liability for CFD debt that is issued. But it also means that the property owner is ultimately responsible for paying that debt. Now, the developer benefits from the CFD. The developer gets low-cost financing for required infrastructure. And as we talked about, the property owners are the ones paying, repaying the debt. And because of that, the developer can reduce their equity commitment and their carrying costs during development. So that's kind of their primary benefit. There are risks to CFDs. The primary risk would be there may be different tax rates between developments. So the development across the street may end up having a different tax rate, if the developer goes bankrupt, if there is a significant recession where the assessed values go down and the developer is out of business. and the developer is out of business, the city is not responsible for the debt, the property owners are ultimately responsible for the debt, the property tax will have to go up to cover the debt service. There is a risk to the developer if we enter into a development agreement with the developer where they have to cover the difference between what the property taxes raise and the debt service. And if the property taxes don't raise enough, the developer may have to make that, make up that difference. And finally, the risk to the city, it is one of the more complicated financings that the city will undertake. And mostly because we're selling debt to bond investors. And bond investors have to understand what they're buying and they have to be comfortable buying this investment. So there's a significant due diligence on our part to make sure we are not selling bad bonds, to make sure we disclose and relay, you know, enough information to potential bond investors so they know what they're buying. They're buying CFD debt that's backed by developers and, you know, property taxes, not backed by the city. So it's one of the more complicated financings that we will undertake. And there's also risks associated with bond defaults, even though the city may not be liable for the debt, but they may be guilt by association. If one of our CFDs bond defaults, you know, we may have a, kind of a bad name in the market associated with CFD debt. And other risks to the cities, as we talked about in our little life cycle chart, there's a lot of added burden to the municipality. We are holding separate meetings, we maintaining separate books and records, managing budgets, managing the debt, issuing annual reports, and that goes on for well after the developers are done and the development is done. And finally, it can complicate future bond elections. And what I mean by that is I'll show you a little chart that, it's called overlapping debt. So whenever someone is paying property taxes, they are actually paying the school district property taxes, the county's property taxes, the city has the $1.44 property taxes, the state and other small districts also have property taxes. And if we create a CFD, it layers on to that property tax and adds another level of property tax. So in this diagram I show you, the city has a $1.44 and our existing CFDs has a 210 tax rate. So that adds another tax on to the tax bill. And if we have a special assessment, that adds yet another burden on to the taxpayer. And finally, just wanted to quickly show you that the city currently has, have two CFDs. We have a Vistancia CFD. It was established in 2002. The tax rate is 210. A hundred million of debt was authorized. So far, 67 million has been issued and that went to finance water and sewer infrastructure. And Vistancia West CFD was established more recently in 2015, also has a 210 tax rate. That's a much smaller CFD, nine million is authorized and only three million has been issued, also went for sewer infrastructure.
And these also, or at least the first one I know, I think the second one might, that have some kind of a, of a cushion, a backstop, if you will?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Both of these CFDs, we have what we call a standby contribution agreement and a letter of credit with the developer. And it's bankruptcy proof. So the letter of credit, we can draw upon if the developer is unable to make the payments.
Yes, council member?
So these are protections that we currently have in place with these CFDs to protect the homeowners, the taxpayers. Does the current legislation interfere with that as far as future CFDs go?
No.
Or are we still able to negotiate those? Okay.
We are still able to negotiate that.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the challenge with that is we can negotiate it, but it still rests on the financial strength of the, of the developer ultimately. They can sign an agreement, but if they go bankrupt, you know, we, there's nothing we can do about that. The letter of credit with the bank, we can draw upon, which is bankruptcy proof, but if we have a standby agreement with them and that they're unable to contribute because of, you know, their financial abilities or lack thereof, then there's nothing we can do about it. And the only way would be to raise property taxes to cover the debt.
Yes, council member Hunt?
So when one of these districts begins to get a little bit older and homes are sold and new buyers and so on, maybe the second or third buyer, is it incumbent on, who is it incumbent on to let that second or third or even fourth homeowner know that they're buying into a little bit different, especially where the tax is concerned? Who, is it like CCNRs where they just give them to you and say, read it? So they don't really tell, they don't have to tell the person that they're getting kind of double taxed, right?
There is required disclosure, that we require the developers to disclose the tax rate, the risk to the potential property owners and the buyers. You're absolutely right. It is more like a CCNR, here are some disclosures related to a CFD, please read them.
And council member Hunt, it does also, when you're, when a secondary owner comes in, within the title report, there is that disclosure as well within the title report. So, you know, there is a risk, but fortunately, hopefully, there's, there's good realtors out there and there's people who are paying attention to that and making sure that their clients are aware of that as they're signing their paperwork and they understand what that, what that means.
Okay. We, we would hope that they are. I'm sure there are some that, that don't, just like in an HOA with the CCNRs. Where there's an element of surprise later.
Counsel member Finn?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, how is the initial rating for the bonds set? How do, what do they base that, that rating on for the initial?
So the initial bond, usually they're unrated initially. And so they're, because we just, you know, it, it's very, it's difficult to rate these bonds.
That's why I was asking the question, I couldn't quite.
Very good question.
So.
Yes, they're usually unrated initially and they're usually negotiated deals with, you know, a, a financial institution. And subsequent bond issues can be rated. So our Vistancia, the Vistancia West CFD bonds are not rated currently because we have only done one issue. And the Vistancia CFD bonds, I believe, are rated A.
Okay.
No, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, actually. I should look that up.
So if you did refunding bonds, there'd probably be a rating associated with the refunding bonds?
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question is, do, do these have any impact on the bond ratings for any other entities? So you, you talked about it stacking, right? So the school district that might issue some bonds, do CFDs have any impact on how that, the assessed value or the bond rating, how it would impact them? I'm just curious.
You know, one thing I, I might mention is just a recollection of prior reviews by some of our credit rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, Moody's, Fitch. In the past, we had conversations with the city of Peoria's creditworthiness. Obviously, we have incredible financial stability, great record, strong reserves, but there was a notice of recognition that we are still a growth community, which creates an element of risk. And that, in that way, they kind of recognize that growing communities do have to look at this kind of mechanism as a way to finance. And so in a way, that kind of limited us for a while and why we were at a double A plus instead of a triple A. Forbid, I don't know if that answers your question?
No, I think it does. There's really not a direct connection there at all. It has to be something that an analyst or somebody kind of looks at and, and decides that there's either, there's going to be an impact or no impact. But there's no, no mathematical direct connection. Okay.
That's correct. Because bonding, rating agencies look at our city's economic condition, our financial condition, our management practices and debt coverage and not necessarily only at the, and overlapping debt. Yeah, and overlapping burden to the ratepayers.
Thank you.
So then. Can you also answer one more question? The impact of state land. We've got a tremendous amount of state land in this area where we have large, open swaths of, of land. So how does state land impact CFDs? How do CFDs impact state land?
I can probably take that one. Generally, state land wouldn't necessarily impact the ability for a developer to get a CFD because the developer has to be the owner of the property. So that means they've already gone through the process of purchasing the land from state land and are, and have ownership. Now, there may be pockets of land that are, that are within a larger development that are state land and haven't been put up for auction yet. Now, what you run into is that concern about when that state land does come available and the owner may try and may or may not be successful at getting that state land, there isn't a CFD in that little area that's outside of, of the, of the developer that came in and the, the boundaries that they currently own. So there is a risk then that you get into that situation where one side of the street has a CFD and the other side doesn't. And so from a state land port, you know, standpoint in our northern Peoria area, you know, that is a concern because there are pockets where the, they are not currently owned privately held land.
Can I add on to that too? When state, if, if somebody comes in and buys a large portion of state land and they phase out the development of that, that new development, it's very difficult for them to put a CFD on it because they're encumbering on to the property that they haven't taken down yet and they, and state land won't allow that to happen. So it's, that's where it gets difficult if you're going to phase out a state land property, a new developer. If they're going to phase it out, it's very difficult to encumber a CFD over that whole entire property.
And I think phasing it out is a very normal way to deal with state land. And so then as a city, we have to decide if, if we want to take some responsibility for second and third homeowners' property values. And, you know, if you've got one tax rate on one side of the street and another tax rate on another side of the street, do we want that to happen in our city?
Absolutely.
And, and if we don't, how do we prevent it? Because in some cases, it's very difficult to prevent.
Very, very true.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn this back to Katie. We're going to go over the CFD, the city's CFD policy right now.
Okay. Good. So all we wanted to do here was just tee up some important considerations for council for both what the staff looks at. So when we get an application from a, for a CFD, you know, we are evaluating that application against the current council policy, but also give you an opportunity to just kind of be reminded of, of the policy and what it has and what, what we've placed on ourselves in terms of our policy guidelines. So first, just want to start by saying, CFDs were originally enacted in 1988 through the Arizona Legislature. And in 1991, Peoria was one of the first adopters of creating a CFD policy, which really established our policy guidelines and application procedures. And then in 2005 and 2009, we had some minor revisions, but it wasn't until 2014 that we did kind of our first major revisions to the CFD policy. And the first one was restricting CFDs to large regional infrastructure only. So it's important to understand that the statute allows it to go, to be used for any public infrastructure that's being developed. However, we've restricted that through policy to be more of the large regional infrastructure and exclude out the intract subdivision type development or infrastructure. We also included some special consideration for development that was in conjunction with some major economic development projects. So if we had a major commercial coming in or a commercial area that truly met one of council's policy goals related to economic development, we would have the ability, you know, to consider CFD as a way to generate the, the needed funds for the infrastructure associated. And then also, the, the third one was to establish that CFD financing would not be considered solely based on the equivalency, right? So just because there is a CFD here doesn't mean the next door or next development automatically gets a CFD. And so that was, we wanted to make that clear in the policy, that when we're working with developers, that, you know, that's not, that's not a criteria we use to decide if we're going to move forward with an application.
Katie, Andy, if you don't mind just elaborating a bit about what was the rationale for deciding on only including large regional infrastructure?
So that really was to help ensure that the development pays for some certain growth related costs. So again, this gets back to that concept of growth paying for growth. And if we focused on the large regional development, they're helping to add to that regional infrastructure. And it helps preserve the city's bonding capacity as well, right? Because typically, we would have to then go to our bonding capacity to then use, to build some of that infrastructure. So this is a way to kind of really affect that growth paying for growth equation.
So in 2017, there was Senate Bill 1480 that made some changes to the CFD statutes and it became effective in August 9th of 2017. So council may remember that in September of 2017, we made revisions to the city's policy in response to the Senate Bill 1480. And three of the major changes were it expedited the CFD application process. And I'll go through with you in a, in the next slide. It changed our process to review the application and form a CFD if we, if the council chooses to. It also placed a limitation on the application fees. We can only assess 15,000 for an application fee when a developer brings an application to us. And like we said earlier, it changed the board composition, which again, we'll go over a little bit more later. So this slide, I wanted to take you through the CFD formation process and talk to you about as we look to receive this application from Lake Pleasant Heights, what we will be doing. There's really three stages to the formation process. First is the application stage, then we have the public hearing and formation if council decides to form it, and then finally, adopting a budget and tax levy if the, if the CFD is formed. So in stage one, we have pre-app meetings, I'm going to go through this rather quickly. We have, we're reviewing the proposed improvements with the developers, we're looking at a draft application, and we're providing staff feedback to the developers, telling them what we won't, will not accept, what we will accept. And finally, when they bring in a completed application, we launch into a comprehensive review. All departments are involved in this. And according to state statute, within 60 days of that completed application, we have to hold a public hearing and council has to consider an intent to form a, a district. And then there is an objection period. After 30 days, if there is no objection, or if there is an objection, there's another public hearing and council will consider whether they want to form a district. And if the district is formed, the CFD board is formed, the CFD board will then look at a proposed budget, adopt a potential proposed budget, and adopt a final budget. And finally, the tax levy is filed with the county. So that's just, gives you real quickly what the CFD process we will be going through for this application that's coming through. Council does not have to memorize all this, we will literally hold your hand through this whole process. And so I wanted to talk about the considerations that staff looks at as we review this application. And I'm going to actually turn this first one over to Katie.
Right. And I'm not going to belabor this one, but we've already talked about this, that, you know, statute allows for all public infrastructure. Our policy currently limits it to large regional infrastructure and primarily master planned communities. That's generally the language that's in our current CFD policy of what we'd consider in terms of that.
So the next thing that we look at is setting a reasonable target tax rate. So as we looked at, Vistancia and Vistancia West is at a 210. So when we look at this application, we're working to consider what is a reasonable target tax rate considering the tax rates in the existing CFD, in the existing CFDs in the area. And we're also, statute allows for a 30 cent O and M tax, operating and maintenance tax to be added on to the target tax rate. So one of our considerations is we would limit that, the use of that O and M tax.
I think it's important that currently, we don't, neither of the current CFDs have the O and M tax included.
It's over and above the tax rate?
Over and above the 210. Or over, above whatever the tax rate is, it can be.
And who's the 30 cents, who does that go to?
The CFD.
It goes?
To be used for operations and maintenance.
Yes.
The city?
In this case, it goes to the CFD.
The CFD.
Okay. So, so, help me out. Who is, who is the CFD? Who just, who gets the money?
The property owners within the CFD. And typically, these would be used for things like, and you can give some examples of, of.
Okay, so.
How that might be used.
The city creates the CFD, it's a separate district with its own governing board. And, yes.
Yes.
And the CFD district has expenses such as audit fees, investment fees, trust fees, paying agent fees for managing the debt, issuing the annual report, so insurance premiums because the district board has to carry insurance. So those are sort of operating and maintenance expenses of our current CFDs, which this O and M tax can pay for. We currently, with Vistancia and Vistancia West, do not utilize the 30 cent O and M tax, even though there is authority to do that. We require the developer to pay those fees directly. And the O and M tax can also buy And the O&M tax can also, by statute, be used for maintenance of infrastructure, which some other cities like City of Buckeye or City of, I don't know, Goodyear or whatever, they assess the 30 cent tax for maintenance of the infrastructure. We have not exercised that right and...
But we contractually obligate the developer to maintain the infrastructure, even though it's public infrastructure?
No, 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 no. We maintain the infrastructure. If, if for some reason, you know, there was something that the developer was going to maintain that was a public infrastructure, they could use it for that. It's very uncommon. I can't think of...
I would say an O&M tax is probably the wrong nomenclature for it. It's, it's more like an administrative tax for all the administrative costs that go along with the CFD.
Okay. So, so I'm a little confused because the entity who is collecting the tax is just board members and the city is actually doing those administrative jobs, right?
Right.
Well, when they're ready to issue debt, like in the example of Vistancia, if they're ready to issue debt or they need to, they pay for their, their debt issuance costs directly. So they pay those directly.
Okay.
So they don't pay for it through CFD dollars that have been authorized for them.
Because in that case, the developer is obligated to pay for it. But if the developer is not obligated to pay for it, who's the 30 cents go to?
The, the actual district as a separate entity.
Right.
So yes, it's a separate district that is created as an entity to collect taxes.
They'd have to figure out how they're going to use that. I mean, bottom line, you'd have to figure out how you're going to use that. You wouldn't necessarily assess a full 30 cents or, or, you know, or anything like that. I mean, you'd want to estimate, you need to have an estimate of what priority even doing it, you'd want an estimate of what those costs are and what they would be used for. So we'd be evaluating that if there was a request to do that. We'd be evaluating that. Up to this point, we have not done that with our current CFDs.
Okay.
Or allowed that with our current CFD.
Mayor, council, I know it's confusing. We'll move on on this. One other maybe, an example that could come up. Let's say that there is an interest in maintaining the park areas around a development that is way outside the city's normal growth area. And so there's an agreement to have an O&M charge on those residents for a while until such time that we grow to there. That would be a contract to maintain that area that the district runs. And so that would be an example where you have an O&M cost that would not be something the city incurs. However, there's pros and cons to that.
Right. That completely goes against the tide of, of keeping any kind of continuity in the areas with same kind of tax rates.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So, go ahead. I'm just going to talk real quickly about special assessments. This is something that has come up and I think it's worth a discussion. So they, CFDs can also do what's called special assessments. So there's the one mechanism, which is to apply a tax rate and collect through the valuation of homes and what it, you know, what valuations of homes and apply the tax rate to it. And that's the revenue that we, that's generated. There's another way to do it through special assessments, which is not based on the property values, but rather the cost of the infrastructure divided out among a set number of units within the development. And each unit then has an equal share of those costs. So it's a little different way to generate the revenue needed to pay for or to issue debt. Some of the challenges we have with special assessments under the current policy is that they work best for more of that in-trac development. And of course, our policy kind of excludes the in-trac. And the reason for that is because that more closely has a nexus to the actual benefit that those people are receiving, that are paying the assessment. So we want to just keep that in mind. And they can be, they can be used for more regional infrastructure. It's a lot more complicated and honestly, probably less desired by the developer because they are, remember, they are a major property owner. At the beginning, they own all the property, right? So if they put a special assessment and they have to wait until all the units are developed to really not have to make a payment on that, they're going to be making payments on that special assessment for a very long time. So assuming they issue debt against that, obviously.
But if, but if it's done that way, in the end, people can pay off that special assessment when they sell their home.
That is one benefit of the special assessment is that if a property owner has a special assessment, they can either amortize that basically over however many years, you know, 20 years or whatever it is. Or in the event that they're selling their home and want, want it to be a cleaner, you know, look, they can say, look, I will pay the special assessment. But depending upon the cost of the infrastructure and how many units you're spreading at a cost, you know, assessments can range, I think, when we looked at it, 2,000 to $5,000 per unit, just as a general.
Can there be a combination of special assessments and tax rates?
Absolutely. You can absolutely do that.
So special assessments could go on things like that leapfrog park or something like that?
Any, any piece of public infrastructure. Now, a park is considered kind of, you know, serves a larger area. So it depends on the infrastructure and how you, who you want to assess that on, what area you want to assess that on. You know, that's what you kind of have to think about.
Okay.
But you can have both. You can have both a CFD tax and a special assessment, which is collected through property taxes also, but it's just done as more of a lump sum each year. And then additionally, you know, the city is concerned with obviously the financial protection of our residents and property owners within the CFD and would want to consider that overall tax burden, right? If you're thinking of a CFD tax, the city has our tax, the CFD tax and the special assessment, you know, to the degree that you want that level of burden on the taxpayer. We need to, you know, consider that as part of our policy. Go ahead.
So the final consideration we want to bring to council's attention is the Senate Bill 1480 in 2017 changed the board composition requirement for CFDs. Now CFDs will have to be governed by council plus two citizen board members. Or at council's option, five members appointed, appointed by council. And the way the statutes are written, for the two citizen board members, the largest property owner will designate those two members for council appointment. And there are restrictions that apply. The two citizen board members cannot own more than 40 acres of land, cannot be city employees or employees of the developer, basically cannot have any conflict of interest. So it needs to be two citizen members that the property owners will designate for council's consideration and appointment. And I think that, that's it.
Are there any kind of issues that might occur with those two citizens?
Well, I think it's difficult to think of individuals who may just, out of the goodness of their heart, want to, you know, jump onto a board. They may, you may find that, you may not. It may be difficult to find that. And then it's the longevity of these individuals. How long are they willing to sit on a board and, and how will that work? So, you know, I think that there is some, there's some complexity to that. I don't think it's something, it's a hurdle we, we'll have to get over and work with the developer who's interested on what that might be. And certainly, council needs to be comfortable with who they're recommending.
Right. And the two board members have to serve for six years.
So...
If, if the, if the developer chooses to opt out of having those additional two people, is that a option?
Not yet. Maybe, but I don't, I don't know that our...
What was the question?
If they want to opt out. I don't think that's what, or challenge. We're not, we're trying to...
I don't think so, yeah.
It'd be great, but it, it's not going to be an option.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We could, we can go for that next year. How about that?
I think eventually, when, when the developer turns over the homeowners association to the residents of the development, then it could be the homeowners association, maybe president, vice president that are designated to the board. But until that time, it's going to have to be somebody that's designated by the developer. And that's what, that's the con, or that's the issue that we're going to have is having citizens or whoever's designated have an interest to come to the board meetings.
And not have a conflict of interest.
Right. And not have a conflict of interest.
So that was really just more of the information we wanted to provide. We certainly can answer some questions or if we've answered them all already and...
Well, I would, I would just like to make a comment about our intergovernmental group who last year was really, I mean, really big fighters. There was some legislation that, that would have changed CFDs dramatically and given pretty much carte blanche to the developers. I have to say, there would be, there would be nothing, no stakeholder protections in place whatsoever. And we were able to fight that and, and it was a very, very hard fight. Very hard, hard fight. I think it was the year before last, actually.
Yeah, two years ago.
But so, you know, I am very, very thankful to all of their work. It was not easy and I hope that our citizens and future citizens are really thankful to all that work because it makes a huge difference in property values and the value of, of CFDs in our city as we go forward. Big difference. Thank you. That's it? All right?
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to have that discussion. We think that is an important primer to have. This policy issue is going to surface very shortly. And in addition, as, as you had alluded to, mayor, we expect that CFDs are going to continue to grow as a mechanism. And other instruments we're more used to, like impact fees, tend to be more restrictive going forward. So we think this is going to be an important policy decisions for our residents going forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, now transition and I'll, I'll stall as we begin the next presentation here. In November of last year at our council retreat, there was a great conversation by the city council and initiated by the city council to evaluate the possibility of what we would call Community Assistance Resource Center or Human Service Resource Center. And the concept's pretty simple, was to provide and allow for some of our not-for-profit agencies here in Peoria to provide direct service to our residents. And the council had an interest in us looking at where would we have such a resource and how would it work and operate? And so with that, we've had our staff look at this very closely and we wanted to provide an update to you.
Great. Thank you. Hello?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I appreciate your time. What I'll do is introduce the item and I'll turn it over to Karen Einbeck. She's our community assistance manager on my right, and she will go through some of our findings. So as Jeff indicated, the purpose of the study session tonight is to provide you with our exploratory efforts in terms of a potential Community Assistance Resource Center. In concept, a resource center is a type of facility where we could house a, a number of selected nonprofits. It could also include some city staff as we do provide some direct services like utility assistance and, and emergency home repair. So it could be a facility all housed in one place that we have available to our citizens. Now, the interest in the resource center was first expressed at the November 3rd council retreat, you might recall from that session. We've accomplished, I think, an enormous amount of work in that time period. And what we want to do is be in a position to provide you with information that to the extent the council wants to move over the next budget cycle, we're positioned to be able to do that. Some of the work that we've done over this period of time is we've, we've researched a number of models across the valley. We've talked to a number of our colleagues. Other area, other municipalities in the valley provide a resource center. For example, you may, you may know that Abendale and Gilbert provide a resource center in a, in a decommissioned library facility. City of Scottsdale provides one within a senior center. The city of Surprise utilizes their old city hall on Bell Road and they're contemplating a brand new facility for a resource center. We've also been vetting potential locations and what might be an appropriate square footage and how many nonprofits might we be able to provide access to in a facility. We looked at a lease option offsite. We've looked at, is there space available on our city hall campus and/or there are other, are there other options? We've also been, we were, we were grateful that we were able to secure some unused office furniture, working with our economic development department. So to the extent we want to move forward, we have procured and separated some of this facility, it's, some of these, some of this furniture, it's good quality that we could devote towards a potential resource center. We've also, we'll talk to you about some service model types. We've had some preliminary discussions with some of our other departments, notwithstanding the police department if there's any security concerns. We've talked with our risk management groups as well. And we've identified a funding scenario. A funding scenario that we've talked to our not-for-profit council subcommittee, but we'll talk to you tonight about that funding scenario. What we'd like to, what we'd like, the kind of, what we'd like to get from the council is, is a resource center something we want to move forward on? What would be the timing of that? And if we, if there is interest in moving forward, are we generally on the right path? So we'll identify a model and some funding scenarios for your consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Karen.
Good evening, mayor and council. So as Chris discussed, there are some decision points to be made if we move forward, which include timing, location, a service model type, and the funding scenario. So starting with timing, we feel that if we move on the trajectory that we're on and with the research that we've done, that we could potentially have a scenario to open a resource center in the next fiscal year, included through the budget process. And if that's the case, then with all the tenant improvements and whatnot that would need to be done, we could potentially open in the last quarter of the fiscal year, which would be the fastest scenario that we have available to us. As Chris mentioned, we've investigated some potential sites, both on campus and off campus. And right now, we feel like pursuing some modular units that the city already owns is a very viable option for us. Placing those on the vacant lot north of the PSAB building off of Cinnabar, they are, there's six modular units that are right now housed at the Beersley Water Treatment Plant that were most recently used for the census workers and are available for use. And we would move those down to that location potentially. And it would be about 4,000 square feet of space utilizing all six of them. And we would have some city staff there and then potentially house between eight and 10 nonprofits in that space. So there are a couple of service model types that we found through our research and knowledge. And the first one being a continuum of service, which is basically a comprehensive array of services that follows a client over a period of time, from the time they enter into service and then transition out of service. And then a targeted service model, which is really a very identified model where we determine what the gaps in service are that the city provides or that other nonprofits provide. And then we determine what we want to house in that center, whether it be veteran services, disabled services, domestic violence services. So it's more of a select on an as-needed basis that could change over time. And so we would also envision seeing a lot of our city services in there, as Chris mentioned. So some of the things that are offered through community assistance, such as the neighborhood grants, utility assistance, and emergency home repair, those types of services. So those would also be located in there with the nonprofits. That would be our initial vision. The community assistance division then would manage contracts with these nonprofits to make sure that they're performing as they intended and that we intended. So that would be another way to keep an, keep an eye on everything that's coming in and out of the resource center. And also, we would have a location, a dedicated location to offer our monthly support series seminars. So the, the main discussion point that we had the other day with our council, not-for-profit council subcommittee, was to talk about funding scenario for this. If we move forward the way that we're moving, then there is potential to have this done within divisional and departmental budgets. And taking away the federal funds, we would be utilizing community development block grants to the extent possible. So this would take about $450,000 of our CDBG allocation, which is about $800,000. The remaining amount would still go towards administration expenses and then public services that we provide on a continual year-round basis. And those have some limitations and that's basically that we do provide some public services. And also, an important limitation to the CDBG funding would be that because it's federal funding, we would have Davis Bacon, we would have to use federal prevailing wages. But that's just a given and we've done other projects that do that. So it's not something new, it's just a consideration to add some expense. And then we would recommend the, using a portion of the general fund grants that go through the council subcommittee, which we would use about $135,000 towards this project, leaving almost $100,000 for other nonprofits to utilize. And, and so it's important to, to talk about the fact that we did have a lot of discussion about this at last week's meeting with our council subcommittee. And we are basically sending forward a scenario that would accommodate this if that's the direction that we're going to go. And then the, we would need to repurpose the neighborhood grant program, which is the better known probably as the HOA grant. And that would basically remove that grant from service for a one-year period while we utilize it to get this project done and then potentially start back up again in FY20. And I only say potentially because that's always a, a one-time supplemental request. And that's $150,000 to go towards this. And then there's other identified sources within the departmental budget. And that is the commuter rail study funding. And that is basically, as we mentioned in the email that went out to you all last week, is basically being handled by... is basically being handled by MAG at this time. And so that could potentially free up this $300,000 to go towards this project. So within the division and the department, we've identified a little bit over a million dollars that could go towards this. And we, we're not construction experts, but we have made a very educated guess with some help from the engineering department and some others, that this could take about $850,000, including prevailing wages and whatnot, to move forward.
Those are all, this is one time. And so after this one year of getting this constructed and up and running, then we would take those CDBG funds in following years and go back to directly contributing those to nonprofits. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So this all represents what we believe would be required to get the center up and running and do tenant improvements. I should mention, too, that we've given some thought to the appearance of the permanency of using the modular units. And that budget would also include giving them a better sense of permanency, including, you know, perhaps some stucco and some architectural interest to it, to also help it fit in on campus a little bit better. And so, some of that has been included. One thing that engineering suggested to you was to have it on grade, have it on a slab, so that you don't have, you know, the walkways that you typically see with a modular unit moving up to it. So we think that with the help of engineering and finding the right firm potentially to help with this, we could make it seem like it's a permanent solution, a permanent part, a home on city campus for this building.
And that location is right on the 83rd Avenue bus line, isn't it?
Correct. And that was an important consideration, too, when we thought of this, is, you know, it's a familiar place for clients to come if they need other services, to pay water bills, et cetera. They're, you know, they're on city campus already, and they're on a bus line, and that's very, very important. And I should mention, too, that we did, Chris and I did meet with our HUD representative for the city, and it was, you know, well-received. They're not, you know, likely to put something in writing, but it's, they were, it was very well-received, and they felt like, you know, this is a, something that is a good use of the block grant funds, if that's what council likes to.
Good, okay, thank you. Council, questions?
I have some questions.
Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for all the work that you've done since November. There's been a great deal accomplished, and I really appreciate that. I know that there was some question from HUD on the modular units maybe not being able to fund because of their permanency. Has that been taken care of at this point? Are they okay with that?
Well, our HUD representative did not have any concerns over that. And we did explain to him the idea that it was important to our city to make it feel and have the look and feel of something more permanent, so that when residents and clients come in, it doesn't feel like an afterthought, because it's not. It's an additional service. So I think with the way that we explained it, it kind of alleviated any concerns he would have, that it was something that would, you know, be here this year and gone the next. So I don't sense that we're going to have any further concern about that.
That's good news, thank you. When you went out to Avondale and Scottsdale, Chandler, Surprise, and Gilbert, did they give you any indication of the success of their programs?
They, you know, a lot of statistics, they keep a lot of statistics about who's coming in. Surprise is probably the closest partner that would have something in the size range that we're talking about. And theirs is, you know, overwhelmingly booming, partly because it's new and partly because of its location in the valley. There aren't other locations in the Northwest Valley like this yet. The closest large facility would be Avondale. So there's been a high need, it's really, the nonprofits are almost begging to be in their center, and they're kind of bursting at the seams, which is why they're looking at a different facility. But they're processing and helping over 250 to 300 clients a month in there. So, and they have quite a few nonprofits that share space, which is something that could easily be accommodated, so that you can get more nonprofits in that same space. So they might have AM, you know, some people there are AM, PM, some people there one day a month. It all depends on what they're offering. So, so far, I would say that would be the closest in size to what we're looking at. And they're, they're doing a very successful business.
Good, thank you. And the one thing I want this council to know is that, you know, we've been funding a lot of these not-for-profits for over 20 years now. And this time, we're looking at, the city's going to be taking care of itself to some degree. And some of these organizations may not get funding, but it'll only be for one year. And Karen and her group, they have vetted out these organizations well enough to know that if they don't get our funding for this year, they're not risking going out of business. Those organizations that would have any risk attached to it, we're going to fund them. And an example would be Benavia. We run their daycare program, we give them a significant amount of money for their daycare program. If we were to cut that funding, they would probably close their doors. And so Benavia is one of those that we've identified that's going to be funded this year. So I just want to make sure that the council understands that, that while we may not fund some of these organizations, it'll only be for a one-year time period. Now, we'll go back into our cycle again next year. That's all I have, and thank you.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Thank you, Mayor. To expand on that, well, thank you for all the work that you've put into this, because so much time has gone into it. And I think this is very exciting. Peoria is ready to set something like this up and provide this kind of service to our citizens. But to expand on what Councilwoman Patena was saying, is that I think we're taking one step back with regard to our giving, to take a giant step forward in the future, to be able to take the services that we provide, the service level, to new heights. And so I think it's just, it's a great move. So, again, we're not taking anything away from anyone. This is going to make it so much better in the long run. So, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Karen, so I've been involved in this for a while, and so I have a question for you. The number of agencies that you've spoken to, what's their reaction to the possibility of coming on campus and being part of this? Because I know that other cities are doing it, but when you started this conversation with them, what was their, what was their reaction?
Well, to be honest, we haven't done very much outward-facing public discussion of this until we had some better information and make sure that we're going in the direction that council wants to. So we're really, I mean, based on the involvement that the other centers have, and the really, really strong relationships that we have with our nonprofits, I foresee that they're going to be very excited about this. But we didn't want to make any promises or any gestures to anybody until we were sure that this would move forward. As part, as we discussed this actually last week in the council subcommittee meeting, and if this is the direction that we're going, and we are going to wait till tonight, we did put forward a funding scenario that accomplishes this with the council subcommittee. And so it's time to move forward and let our nonprofits know what our preliminary recommendations are. And along with that, will also be information of why we're changing our funding structure for one year. And I think that that's going to start the feed, you know, the really heavy feedback cycle, where we can start vetting some strong interest in who is excited and might potentially want to be a part of the resource center itself.
Thank you. I just want to applaud you and your team for the work that you're doing here, because it's phenomenal work, and reaching out to the other cities and going and doing, you know, field trips and really learning more about what they offer to kind of come up with an idea of what we want to offer. To Councilwoman Patena and Binsbacher, I'm fully supportive of this, and I like the analogy of step backward to move so much forward. That's a great analogy, and I think it's absolutely time that we do that, because we have so many residents that want to have more services offered to them, and this will give them an opportunity to have that right here on our campus. So thank you so much.
I have a question. You mentioned two different models, a continuum of services and targeted services. Have you decided which one of those we're going to go with, or is it a combination?
No, I actually think that we were looking for an initial nod in one direction or another. I think the staff recommendation would be that we go with a targeted model, so that as the city's needs change, and our growth changes, and our needs change, that we can change with it and, you know, select our priorities.
Yeah, I was thinking with the continuum of service that you're going to, we're going to need to hire professionals and, you know, go home with people.
Right.
Yeah, it seems a little outside of our, outside of the realm.
Right.
But I am hearing general support from this council in a very big way, and I also concur with that. Is there any other comments? All right, well, I think that we're looking to move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the general direction on that. And that funding scenario will be something you will see in our budget process coming up here in April. So thank you very much for the help on that. And with that, that's all that we have for study session.
Good, we are adjourned until our 7:00 meeting.
There. I'm not muted. Muted. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, March 1st Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Peoria. I'm going to go ahead and get started with roll call. I'm Sean Hutchinson. Vice Chairman Jeff Nelson.
Sorry, President.
Secretary Jay Aluski.
Present.
Member Brian Patterson.
Present.
Member Linda Grace.
Present.
Member Clay Alsop.
Present.
Member Joanna Conde.
Present. Okay.
There we go. And it looks like John, Member John Albright is not with us tonight. So I'll get started by reading an opening statement to get the meeting started. This commission is composed of Peoria citizens who have been appointed by the city council to serve on this commission as a civic responsibility without compensation. Our duty is to study and review planning and zoning issues within the City of Peoria. The commission hears zoning cases, holds public hearings, or may conduct a study session on a topic. Discussions made by the commission are forwarded to the written recommendations to the city council who take final action. All hearings are conducted in accordance with Rules for Procedures and Robert's Rules of Order. Each case will be called in the order in which appears on the agenda unless otherwise announced during the meeting. In the interest of maintaining a fair and efficient hearing, the commission adheres to the following steps. Chair will call the case. City staff will then provide a brief report and recommendation. The applicant is then invited to give a presentation. Then any member of the public may provide testimony. The testimony is limited to three minutes. When we call your name, please come up to the podium and provide your name and address. After all the testimony has been taken, we will invite the applicant back up to provide any rebuttal or final statements. Finally, we will have the commission discussion and decision. Anyone wishing to speak must complete a speaker request form and hand it to the assistant on my left, down at the end of the dais. Please be as brief as possible, and do not repeat statements already made by others. Any member of the public may appeal to the city council the decision of the commission regarding a conditional use permit. The appeal must be submitted in writing to the Planning and Zoning, Planning and Community Development Department within 15 calendar days of the date of the commission's decision. All commission recommendations on public hearing items, including general plan amendments, rezones, zoning code amendments, and special plans, move forward to the regular city council meeting. The city council will then act upon the recommendations of the commission. The city council may concur with the decision, modify it, overturn it, or remand it back to the commission for further consideration. We welcome citizens' comments, and as fellow citizens of Peoria, we thank you in advance for your participation. Okay, that being said, we will get started tonight with the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, or have been previously reviewed by the commission, and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a commission member show requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So tonight, we have five items on the consent agenda. We have disposition of absence, discussion and possible action to approve or excuse the absence of Chair Sean Hutchinson, Commissioner Brian Patterson, and Commissioner Clay Alsop from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on February 15th. 2C, the minutes, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes at a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on February 15, 2018. Item 3C, that is CU 1720, Vistancia Sports Grill, request to obtain a conditional use permit for the bar tavern use of an existing freestanding restaurant building located at 28615 North El Mirage Road, northeast corner of El Mirage Road and Vistancia Boulevard, within the Vistancia Marketplace Shopping Center. The proposed site is zoned Vistancia Community Commercial. Item 4C is CU 18-02, Speedy Pawn, a request to obtain a conditional use permit for a pawn shop use within an existing building located at 8340 West Peoria Avenue. The proposed site is zoned intermediate commercial, C2. And then we have item 5C, CU 1717, Express Car Wash on Thunderbird Road, a request to obtain a conditional use permit to allow for the development and operation of an automated car wash within a new building approximately 3,800 square feet in size on a 1.67-gross-acre vacant lot site, located east of the northeast corner of 83rd Avenue and Thunderbird Road, within the Arrowhead Mixed Use Center planned area development. Commissioners, do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
I second.
And a second. Would you please vote on the consent agenda? Looks like that passes unanimously. We'll move on to the regular agenda now. First item up for business is unfinished business, and that is item 6R, Z16-0013, Cowtown Rezoning, request to rezone approximately 78 acres from special use permit and floodplain to the Cowtown Planned Area Development to clarify the allowed uses, development standards, and operational criteria for Cowtown Range. And I think we're actually going to get a report. This one, excellent. Must be up, Lori, thank you.
Indeed, thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Lori Dever, I'll be presenting the staff report this evening. We have had an update on the case, and so what I'd like to do is run quickly through the project and then provide the updated information to you, which was also included as a copy on your packet this evening. So what we have here is a request for a rezoning case from special use permit and floodplain to the Cowtown Planned Area Development. Brian Greathouse is here this evening. He is representing the applicant, Westward Ho Adventures. The site is approximately 78 acres. It is located in northern Peoria, off the Old Carefree Highway alignment. Surrounding the property is Arizona State Trust Land, to the north, to the west, and to the south. Over to the east, you do have about 428 acres of private property. You also have the APS substation, and... open space in a state density residential. It is the same dens, same designations as when it was annexed, and this project is, still remains in conformance with the general plan designation. The zoning, upon annexation in 1994, the city assigned initial zoning for the property. At the time, the closest zoning districts that the city had were special use and floodplain districts. The floodplain district was later removed from the zoning ordinance. This has caused a non-conforming situation, if you will, that if the property wanted to be improved, they could no longer do that because the standards are gone. They would have to, they are non-conforming. So staff felt and agreed with the applicant that the PAD application was the best mechanism to go forward and improve the property into the future. The request and analysis piece, the land use. As I said, Cowtown has been a host for recreational and entertainment activities along with shooting competitions, firearm trainings, advanced training out there. And as we've talked about before in previous discussion, the shooting range is a non-traditional use, and so while the city is the land use authority, this is definitely not a traditional use that we would see. Because of that, the owner did select a consultant to review the application and the practices that occur within Cowtown. Based on that information, the consultant proposed recommendations, which were implemented by the applicant, then the consultant reevaluated the range and has stated that they meet the criteria for best management practices. Going forward, the city is also looking to do a memorandum of understanding with the applicant. The owner will be responsible for making the appropriate modifications to ensure that those best practices are maintained throughout. Because the firearm industry does change, shooting range design and management does change and evolve over time, we want them to have the ability to make those appropriate changes as necessary. Access, as I mentioned, is off the old Carefree Highway. Definitely no water and sewer in this area. It is a remote location, so water and portable toilets are brought in as an add, as needed basis. With the PAD mechanism, with the rezoning, they would be able to increase storage capacity and permanent facilities if they were to do future enhancements and expansion of the property. On the public safety portion, the PAD outlines additional review criteria depending on what the event is going out at Cowtown, and the owner has agreed to fence and sign the entire property. In certain locations where the topography is so remote or does not provide for the ability to fence, they are looking to do a post-situation in, in intervals. Signage would be all the way around the property, and that exhibit is noted within the packet. From an outreach standpoint, the application was noticed in accordance with the Peoria zoning ordinance, and the outreach included postcards, signage, and a neighborhood meeting. No support or opposition was received prior to November 2nd. On November 2nd, we did receive a letter of opposition from the Arizona State Land Department. After that, Planning Commission granted a continuance in Arizona State Land Development, and the applicant meant to begin working on an agreement to address the items in the letter. So January 18th, we did receive an email from Arizona State Land Department saying that they did intend to withdraw the letter of opposition once an agreement was in place between the parties, that being the applicant and the state land. Provided to you this evening, we did receive an email February 28th from the Arizona State Land Com, Deputy Commissioner. They have withdrawn their letter of opposition, so no opposition is, is on the case this evening. Because the letter of opposition has been withdrawn, staff is now changing and making a recommendation this evening, asking the Planning Commission to recommend approval of case Z 13-0013 to City Council, subject to the conditions in the staff report. And with that, I will take any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Nelson?
Thank you, Chairman. Lori, you'd mentioned where, whether, I think, I can't remember the slide, it was a few back, you mentioned if there may be a situation where permanent facilities have to be put in place or more water storage capacity. I can't remember what, it was under infrastructure, water sewer. If that's the, if, if permanent facilities were required in the future, would that come back before the commission or under this PAD? Would that go through a different process?
Chairman, Commissioner Nelson, depending on the intensity of the increase of use and depending on what improvements needed to be made, that may be addressed through a site plan application, which would be through an administrative nature. If part of that change included a change in intensity of the uses that were on the property, that may trigger a PAD amendment, which may be going back in front of commission to look at, at that point of time. So it would depend on the intensity and the changes being proposed at that point.
Thank you, that makes sense, appreciate it.
Lori, I have a question. Was the, was the owner and management of the Pleasant Valley Airport part of the, part of the area where the postcards were mailed to for neighborhood meetings?
Chairman, good question. They are a leased property from the State Land Department, so because of the notification laws, we have to, we have to send the notice to the property owner, so in this case, it would be Arizona State Land Department. It would be under their purview to notify the lessees in the area of the application.
So they would have been part of that, then?
They would have been contacted. It would have been State Land Department's purview to reach out to them.
And just to follow up on that question, and maybe when the applicant's making, making his statement, the, I keep seeing in here about the helicopter training and the, you know, the, you know, the shooting air to ground, ground to air, whatever it is, but I'm worried that if, if no consideration has been given to, you know, the glider school that they have over there and the, the flight patterns and all that, I mean, is that all being coordinated, or is that something that's in our purview?
Chairman, members of the commission, I will, I'll start the, the answer to it, and if Mr. Greathouse would like to come in and chime in more, then I would welcome that. Every time that a helicopter operation would occur, the applicant would need to file for a temporary use permit with the city, so that would, would come in, in advance, and the city would be doing additional review on that application. So additional departments other than planning, so it would be public safety, fire, et cetera, reviewing that application. Depending on the nature of that application, we may alert additional people in the area of the operations. It is the owner and, the owner's responsibility to maintain those operations within the property of Cowtown. And so with that, Mr. Greathouse would probably be able to provide additional information on that.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Would you please state your name again and, and address for the record?
Thank you, Chairman. Brian Greathouse, 702 East Osborne Road in Phoenix. We are very happy to be here, and at the end of the day, we request your recommendation of approval on this PAD to the City Council, and we're excited about moving forward. Thank you, Lori, for the great presentation. I think that's about the third time I've heard it. Gets better every time. And your answers were fantastic, by the way. The temporary use permit for, I'll call it potential helicopter tactical training and shooting is limited only to military and law enforcement agencies, so it's not like some private group can go charter a helicopter and all of a sudden be out there shooting wildly. It'll be a very controlled and regulated environment by people who know what they're doing. They'll submit plans to the city. Notices will go out. There's, there's a lot of safeguards in place. So that's that, and just for the record, we support all the findings. We are okay with all the stipulations, and if you guys would be so inclined to recommend approval to the City Council, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, any questions for the applicant from the board? I just, the only reason I asked that is I got some family members that are, I'm, I'm not a pilot or pretend to be one, but, but some of my family members are, and they're pretty familiar with the operation out there, and I know it falls out of the sphere of influence of Sky Harbor, so they have a lot of leeway on the flight patterns that they take and the, you know, with the, with the glider school out there, and I'm, you know, I'd be concerned about, you know, any kind of, if there is, if there was operations going on, if the coordination, and it's probably more not on our level, but it's just something, I know it's an operation within the city, and I, it was just my concern about, most concerned about that.
Yeah, it's a valid concern. From what I understand, all those leases for the Canyon Raceway and the glider school and all the other state land leases are all going away, and they haven't been extended, so I don't think the glider school is going to be a conflict with our, once again, potential helicopter shooting. This, this won't occur on a regular basis.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, no other, no other questions from the, do we have any requests to speak on them? Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other requests to speak, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And is there any other further comment from the commission on this item? Okay. Oh, there we go. Commissioner Aluski.
I think it's not necessarily a question as a, more of a procedure, because we have a memorandum here from the state that, well, a document that states it'd be a memorandum of understanding with the city. If somebody makes the motion, does this need to be included into, or is it already in your recommendations?
Commissioner Aluski, no, it is not a part of the recommendation. That is a separate item that is being handled. So it's not, it does not need to be included within the motion.
All right, excellent. All right, seeing no other discussion, I will entertain a motion on item 6R, Z 16-0013.
Sir Chairman, I recommend approval of Z 16-0013 to City Council, subject to conditions in the staff report.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Alsop. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Conde. Would you please vote? All right, giddy up, we have, we have unanimous decision. Okay. Next up is, under new business, item 7R, we have Z 17-34, Leighton Residence, a request to rezone approximately 1.16 acres, 50,312 square feet from General Agriculture to Suburban Ranch 35, to better align development standards with the properties in the area to facilitate construction of a custom single-family home. The property is located at 6990 West Tacoma Drive. Staff report, who's up?
Good evening, Chair Hutchinson, members of the commission. My name is Randy Proch. I will be presenting this item 7R, Z 17-34, the Leighton Residential Rezoning. As you've stated, this application is by Mitchell Leighton and Elizabeth Baldwin, the owners of this property, just over one acre in size, located just east of the northeast corner of 71st Avenue in Tacoma. This is generally at the edge of Peoria. The Arizona Canal Divergent Channel just north bisects Peoria to the south and Glendale to the north. The area is very rural in nature. There's many ranches still in this area. To the south is a more traditional, single-family residential subdivision. Our general plan land use designation is for a state density residential. That's zero to two dwelling units per acre with a target of one. So as this property is just over one acre in size with one house being proposed, this does meet the intent and the character of the general plan. Our current zoning is a bit of a hodgepodge surrounding the area. Beyond the immediate block between 71st Avenue and approximately 70th Avenue is mostly unincorporated Maricopa County. Again, to the south is a more traditional, single-family residential subdivision, R135 is the designation. To the immediate west of the proposal outlined in red is Suburban Ranch 35, the same zoning district that's being asked this evening. To the north is still agricultural, and two houses to the east is agricultural as well. This lot is a little bit different, as there is not a single-family home on this site already, and that is our request this evening to align the standards more in line with the surrounding As mentioned, these are the standards currently as ag. There is a minimum lot width of 200 feet, minimum depth of 200 feet, and setbacks that really put a burden on our applicant this evening to try to fit a home within the buildable lot area. The proposal is SR35. As a comparison, I've included R135, which is the subdivision to the south. You can see that they're virtually identical. The SR35 has additional allowances should they wish to proceed with livestock and uses such as that. That is not their intent this evening, but that is more of the character of the area you can find with suburban ranch, which is the general surrounding to the west, north, and further east of the proposal. In accordance with our notification, rezoning, notice of application, notice of hearing postcards were sent out to all residents within 600 feet and all HOAs within one mile. This site was posted by the applicant in accordance with our requirements. We have only had two emails of general inquiry wondering what was occurring. It's not often you see zoning cases go around this area, and we did conduct a neighborhood meeting. We were the host on January 24th at 5:00 PM. Myself and our applicants were present, however, no attendees ended up coming. Our findings for you this evening are the proposed zoning district is in conformance with our goals and objectives of the general plan. This rezoning is consistent with that designation of a state density residential, which has a target of one dwelling unit per acre, and this will result in a residential development, and again, this is to develop only a single-family home that is compatible with the surrounding areas. Our recommendation for you this evening is to recommend approval of Z 1734 to City Council, subject to conditions outlined in the staff report. With that, I will take any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? Okay.
Unless it's necessary.
We'll close the public hearing then. Any further questions for staff? Or any questions at all?
Nope.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion. Who's next?
Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval, make a motion to recommend approval of case Z 17-34 to the City Council, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Patterson. Would you please vote? And we have unanimous decision. Okay. Moving right along. We are up to... All right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? Okay. We'll close the public hearing then. Any further questions for staff? Or any questions at all?
Nope.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion. Who's next?
Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval, make a motion to recommend approval of case Z-17-34 to the City Council, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Patterson. Would you please vote? And we have unanimous decision. Okay. Moving right along. We are up to a call to the public on non-agenda items. Nobody feels like talking tonight. Okay. Updates from staff. You guys always have lots of stuff to say.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, I have the pleasure this evening of doing updates from staff. Just a quick reminder, our next meeting, March 15th, 2018, has been canceled. So we will see you back here April 5th, 2018. It'll be a regular meeting here.
Excellent. Okay, any updates from the zoning commission?
Okay. I was wondering if there was a possibility of having a study session on some of the zoning. We had talked about that after the last, you know, a couple of us. Has that been discussed? Chris?
Commissioner Conde, Members of the Commission, certainly we're very willing to do a study session with the commission on any topics you have of interest. I know we do have some new members on the commission. If you have a topic in mind that you'd like us to either bring in support or talk to you about, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, well, one of the issues I would like to see is the width of the lots and the setbacks. That case came up at the last planning and zoning meeting. And I'm not, I'm not really happy with some of the setbacks. I mentioned it at the time and I'd like to see what the plans are for affordable housing and just a whole lot of topics regarding planning for minimal lot sizes, housing structures, et cetera. And whether, I'd also like to have a better understanding of, of why there might be a necessity for a homeowners association for a very small number of lots because my experience has been that it's hard enough to get members on when you have 100 homes, let alone 25 or 30. And I see this affecting Peoria in the future. Not right now, but I can see as things go on. And so I'd like to have some sort of study session to look at the lot sizes, the kind of houses that are built, the number of per acre, the open space, whether it's necessary in some of the small lots, et cetera.
Okay.
Is that clear enough? Maybe it wasn't clear enough.
Commissioner Conde, Members of the Commission, what we'll do is we'll, we've, we'll look at all your comments and we'll figure out the best way to put together a presentation that identifies the current standards of all the zoning districts, how they relate to the general plan, how they advance the general plan, and also the companion documents like the design review manual that requires certain amounts of open space and we can have a conversation about that. So let us go back and identify all those topics and perhaps a timeframe that we can, that we think's reasonable to bring it back to the commission for a study session. That works.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other reports from the commission? All right, seeing none. We have nothing else on the agenda, so we're gonna call this one adjourned. Thank you everyone.
Every spring, right before spring training starts, they publish the USA Today Spring Training Preview. I asked a research company if they would do some what's called data mining in the area of spring training ballparks and found instances where there were 36,000 online reviews of spring training ballparks by actual, they call them users, in other words, fans who have attended exhibition games. And they kind of divided it up into four areas. The facility itself, family friendliness, food, and the fan experience. Then their findings, they were able to turn into a ranking of the ballpark. And when you think about it, there's 10 parks for spring training in Arizona and to finish second, and it's a 25-year-old ballpark, not one that just opened in the last couple of years or anything like that. I think that's remarkable.
The following program is made possible in part by the American Legion Auxiliary Department of Arizona and the West Valley Foundation, celebrating diversity.
My name is Lee Owens. I spent 21 years, five months, 12 days, two hours in the United States Air Force, but I didn't count. And it was the most valuable experience I have ever, ever had. It taught me to be a man at 19 years old. It taught me to work with others, to believe in this country, to believe in the flag, believe in America, and to believe that this country is great because of veterans, people who are willing to put their lives on the line every day. Crop dusters basically fly like acrobatic pilots, very low to the ground, very fast. And as I grew up and got a little older, like 14 and 15, I got to be the flag guy. And I thought that was so cool. I could, he come flying over my head really fast and I'm running to the next row and he lined up on me and fly. So that's how I got my start in aviation because no one in my family flew. Not everybody's gonna be 6'11" and play basketball. Never everybody's gonna be able to sing like Ray Charles. But anybody can be me. All you have to do is be educated, study hard, work hard, work on a dream. And as I said early in this, get gratification for what you do. Learn to fly an airplane. Because it teaches you discipline, it teaches you reward, it teaches you focus, it teaches you to stay on point, to know what you have to do. I can ask a young person at air shows, who is 50 Cent. They can tell me everything about 50 Cent, but they can't tell me anything about Benjamin O. Davis. They can't tell me anything about Bessie Coleman. They can't tell me anything about the Tuskegee Airman. And my job is to educate them to that rich and glorious history that they have and these people that have done some extraordinary things under some very difficult situations. In 1941, Congress set up a program called the Tuskegee Experiment. They didn't even call it flight training. It was used to train young African-American pilots to fight in World War II. These pilots, after graduating, became the Tuskegee Airmen. They started out as the 99th Pursuit Squadron and they were sent to Europe. Finally, after Eleanor Roosevelt came to Moton Field, Alabama, to see why these black pilots weren't sent to overseas to fight for their country. And with the help of Eleanor Roosevelt, were dispatched to Europe where they flew more than 800 missions, more than 200 missions protecting bombers and never lose a bomber. That's a feat that will never be equal again in the United States Air Force. Not only did they do that, but they hold the highest academic pilot scores as a group than any pilot group in the United States Air Force. But these men were, in a segregated world down in Alabama, learned to fly and learned to become great airmen, great emeritarians. And they fought the double V, the victory against segregation in the United States and the victory against fascism and Hitler's Fortress Europe. 66 of the Tuskegee Airmen died in defense of this country. There's Charles McGee. He flown more Air Force missions than any pilot in the United States Air Force. Do anybody know who Colonel Charles McGee is? No one knows. And that's what I feel is my God has put me here to do, to be their legacy, to be their mouthpiece, to tell their story. And my job now is to carry on their legacy, not only of the Tuskegee Airmen, but all the aviators that came before them. Because the greatest aviator in history was a woman, Bessie Coleman. She was from Wachahatchee, Texas. And she died at a very young age, but she was one of the greatest heroes of my life was Bessie Coleman. In the history of people flying around the world, there's only been one African-American that's flown around the world. I want to be the second African-American to fly around the world in honor of the Tuskegee Airmen and all black aviators that came before them. I want to do it in a P-51 Mustang, just as the same as the Tuskegee Airmen fly. They're very expensive to fly, they're high maintenance, but it can be done if we have the right backing and the right help. I mean, flying a plane around the world is no different than flying from here to Tucson. It has to be planned, it has to be worked out, the math of it, the science of it, the weather of it, what it entails to do it. And you have the right people there in your crew. We can do this. We can give back to this legacy that these Tuskegee Airmen gave to this country.
My name is Yolanda Bonilla. I am the president of the American Legion Auxiliary here in Arizona. I'm serving for the year 2017, 2018. Our mission is to support the American Legion by honoring the sacrifice of those who serve, by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military, and their families, both at home and abroad. We advocate for veterans, educate our citizens, mentor youth, promote good citizenship, Americanism, peace, and security.
I wanted to be in the military since I was, since I was a kid.
I served in the United States Air Force.
I served a total of 16 years.
I was deployed 13 times.
On my second deployment, four bombs hit my vehicle.
At 19 years old, that's the first time I ever saw somebody die.
Coming back, I was raging.
I started having pretty horrible nightmares.
I would wake up in the middle of the night, sweats.
I started drinking a lot.
I felt worthless.
I guess I never recognized it in myself.
Eventually, one day I just walked into the VA hospital and said I'd like to see somebody.
Don't suffer alone. You gotta find that link with somebody that'll make you let it go.
It all starts with going to the VA. There's a whole community of veterans that just want to help you out.
It's for the guys who couldn't come back, so you owe it to them to live well. Because they're not here with their families.
We're a unique group of men and women that have fought for our countries in many different ways. And I'm proud to say that I am one of them. The military was a great time for me to really to grow, to mature. It gave me an opportunity to understand myself and understand, you know, our, what we're doing in our world. It gave me a lot more appreciation going overseas to, that I think that gives you a greater appreciation for living here in the United States. And my father was always a very important part. He talked about his time in service too, in World War II. He was with the Army Air Corps. He had served different places. I always listened to his stories. I was an entrepreneur at one time. I had my own business and then we sold that. And then from there, I got into financial planning, financial services, and working with people and trying to help them with their own financial needs. Then I had a moment, you know, a tamale moment. And, you know, for all my life, my mother had always told us that we need to get together to make tamales. And so I've always wanted to do something for my mother. And so I said, Mom, I'm gonna write a book about this. I'm gonna write a book about this family tradition, about you. So, so yeah, after three years, I was able to have my first book, Sophia's Awesome Tamale Day. And Sophia is my mother's name. So that's how I got that. That was easy to pick. Yeah, so that was the first one, Sophia's Awesome Tamale Day. The second one, I realized I wanted to, that people kept on saying, you know, there's a real need for these type of books. And so I realized that what I was writing were books that were teaching kids about their traditions and culture and being proud of their heritage. And I also wanted to add a little bit of history in there. But the really thing is I, is I continued to write more, I found out, is that I wanted them to also honor their parents, their ancestors. And so after writing these books, after writing two or three books, I just, I realized that I had a model. And the model was, I wanted this message that I wanted to share with the kids. This is important that these kids should understand this. The second thing was that Sophia, this young girl, she's the one that provides life learning experiences. And then the third thing was Pepe the Parrot. And Pepe the Parrot has really been incredible. You know, the kids really relate to the parrot. And so Pepe has become, he's probably the most famous out of everybody in the book, in the stories. And he gets to have the last word. He gets to teach the kids new words in Spanish. He's, he's the one that says all the funny jokes. He's the funny guy. So when I ask the story, after the story, I read in classrooms. And when they share this story, they all want to know more about Pepe, you know, where did Pepe come from? And is Pepe gonna be in the next book? And so, but you asked me about the names of the books. So that was the first book, Sophia's Awesome Tamale Day. The second book is called The Search for the Lost Art of Making Tortillas. And I got that idea because my grandmother made tortillas every day. My mother, she made them less. My sister, I think, going to Costco is making tortillas. The next story was about Isabella's treasure. And this is a story about Sophia trying to find her family's treasure. And along the way discovers a real treasure about knowing your family's history. And it was at this point I realized that a lot of kids in school today have a problem with their identity. You know, they, what they hear things in the radio and the television and, and they're very concerned about their, who they are and where they came from and where they belong. So I wanted to share the story about Sophia and her ancestor, Isabella, teaching kids about their cultural traditions and being proud of their heritage and honoring and respecting their ancestors. That's the real key to all my books. The first one, The Tamale Book, which is Sophia's Awesome Tamale Day, that's about bringing family together, that family tradition of tamales. The, you know, The Search for the Lost Art of Making Tortillas, you know, that's about, you know, keeping those traditions alive and keeping family together like that. I just feel like I'm helping our community to be better.
For decades, women have been an integral part of our armed forces, answering the call of duty and making sacrifices to protect our country. In addition to their military roles, these women are mothers, wives, partners, students, community leaders. From their military experiences emerge new strengths and skills which are carried over to civilian life.
Military taught me how to be stronger, how to have faith in myself.
Military taught me how to be stronger, how to have faith in myself, to trust my instincts, to fight when I needed to. It taught me how to be a leader. And once I learned how to be a better leader, I learned how to be a better mother.
But this strength can be tested at times, as women face life challenges during and after their service.
You're expected to be one of the guys, and you strive to be one of the guys. You're just trying to be like your brothers next to you, which can be challenging, because you kind of lose your identity as a woman.
Going from being in the military and then having to build my own life from scratch, that was, you know, a source of anxiety, and that got worse.
At some point, you get tired of your life as it is, or I got tired of my life as it was, and needed to do something about it.
Resources and support are available to help veterans and their loved ones move forward with their lives.
My name is Yolanda Bonilla. I am the President of the American Legion Auxiliary here in Arizona. I'm serving for the year 2017-2018. Our mission is to support the American Legion by honoring the sacrifice of those who serve, by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military, and their families, both at home and abroad. We advocate for veterans, educate our citizens, mentor youth, promote good citizenship, Americanism, peace, and security.
I served in the United States Air Force.
I served a total of 16 years.
I was deployed 13 times.
On my second deployment, four bombs hit my vehicle.
And at 19-years-old, that's the first time I ever saw somebody die.
Coming back, I was raging.
I started having pretty horrible nightmares.
I would wake up in the middle of the night, sweats.
I started drinking a lot.
I felt worthless.
I guess I never recognized it in myself.
Eventually, one day, I just walked into the VA hospital and said I'd like to see somebody.
Don't suffer alone. You gotta find that link with somebody that'll make you let it go.
It all starts with going to the VA. There's a whole community of veterans that just want to help you out.
It's for the guys who couldn't come back, so you owe it to them to live well, because they're not here with their families.
Hello, my name is Dabingo Bonilla. I'm the Department Commander of the American Legion of Arizona, and I'm proud to serve my country, and I'm proud I served in Vietnam. I joined the military when I was 17-years-old. I joined the Army. I went to school at Fort Bliss, Texas. I went to Fort Worth, Texas for the MP School in Fort Worth, Texas. And I did my time. I went to Vietnam. I did a year and a half tour, and I got wounded. I was a gunner at the helicopters. I was a gun gun operator, and I got the Bronze Star and Silver Star. I was very honored to get those, to get that. And when I gave them out of the service, I moved my hometown, El Paso, but there was no jobs, and I moved back. I moved to Phoenix, Arizona. And my son, matter of fact, my son came one day and says, "Dad, there's some old guys in this building. I went to cut the grass, and they're all veterans." So, I went to see the American Legion Post 25 in Chandler, and right the first day I was there, it really helped mentally, because I was still young. I was still in my 30s, but I still had memories of Vietnam. Like I said, no war is a pretty war. The American Legion is the largest program in the world. We have the most members in the world. We're gonna have our centennial here pretty soon, a couple of years, for the American Legion. We started in 1919, so it's an old program for our veterans. We started the Bill of Rights. So, when people ask us, "What do we do?" Well, first of all, if you have children who serve their country or your dad, we are the ones who fought for their rights and get the Bill of Rights. Well, our concern right now is the American Legion, we have so many veterans coming from Afghanistan, Middle East wars, they're doing two, three, four tours. And what we're trying to do now is trying to educate those younger men that are coming back from the Middle East to tell them, "It's okay. We're here for you." Overall, the American Legion is aware of the promise of our veterans, the promise of our community, our children, our schools. We're involved in a lot of things in the American Legion. It's not just about veterans. So, we do work hard for our community and our state and our veterans. We do care about our children, our neighbors. Most of all, the programs we utilize and the funds that we raise is for our community and state, not just only for our veterans. So, you know that we do work hard.
We matter because we support our veterans community. We have been doing this since 1919. We advocate for veterans because they come back, and a lot of them are basically lost, not only physically, but mentally. So, the need is there. The families need so much. They've given so much. And our mission is to advocate for veterans, the community, and children. And we support, all our programs support their four pillars. And their four pillars are Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. As far as children and youth, we support Boys State, Girls State. We support junior shooting sports, the oratorical contest, the Americanism essay contest, and basically anything in the community that supports children. That's our future. If we don't take care of our children, where are we gonna be in 20, 30, 40 years? They need to learn our American values. That is why they're important. No matter where you come from, we're a melting pot, and we need to melt a little bit better.
I am the Commander for 6,000 members in the state of Arizona for the Sons of American Legion. Our role is to support our veterans in any capacity that we can. We do that by supporting our post. With working with the American Legion, the legionnaires, we have the ability to be a family, one big family. Sons of American Legion is a program of the American Legion. We are supporters of the Legion. Sons are members that are non-veterans, those who did not serve. We are honoring our veterans, our family, our forefathers. That could be our parents, our grandparents, our stepparents. One of our concerns is that we need to keep our momentum moving forward. Our membership is getting older. Therefore, with that, our members are starting to change, that being of age. We have newer veterans coming on. That means they are younger. We have newer sons coming on that are younger. And we're trying to make sure that our older members are staying together with us as a family and not leaving us. Because we don't get involved politically. We take a stand to support our veterans in any way we can, to the best of our ability. As far as that goes, we raise money for them. We go and we try to help them at special events. We try to be there for them if they need assistance at homes. Whatever it takes that we can do as sons, we want to be there.
My words and encouragement to any young person is get a strong, viable education. Work hard on getting an education. Use every scrap of intelligence and books that you can read, every scrap of knowledge you can get will pay dividends down the road. Get an education. Be a man. Be a good citizen. Be a person of worth, and the world will pay you back triple-fold, thousand-fold in dividend. I'm living proof that it's not where you come from, it's where you want to go and where you end up. And I'm a man who come from humble beginnings, but I feel now I'm respected in my field. I'm light to young people, and that's what I want to be. That's my words of encouragement.
My words of encouragement would be, one, to know what you want, to understand, "These are my goals. This is my dream." Two, I think it's so important that you get an education and utilize all the benefits and resources from the military to able to get the education and continue to educate yourself. Work hard and realize the resources that you have available to you based on the goals that you want to. But work hard at what you're trying to do, and never give up.
This program was made possible in part by the American Legion Auxiliary, Department of Arizona, and the West Valley Foundation, celebrating diversity.
I am the Library and Cultural Services Manager for the city of Peoria. And this library for us is really the fabric of this community. We want to be about educating. We want to be about literacy. We want to be about community. We want to evolve as our community evolves and do what we can to serve our community best. Everything that is done at the library is free. We have a youth programming, which we do everything from storytime, crafts, arts. We do educational literacy programs. We have great adult programming. We have computer classes that assist people with learning new programs. We have a teen program, which is phenomenal, which we're really trying to grow. We feel that our teens are really underserved, and we'd really like to see that population grow at both of our libraries. It's all about creativity. It's all about using your imagination. The library is a place where you can be and do anything you want. We are open more than any other library system in Miracle County. We're open every single day, seven days a week. Come and visit us. See what's going on here at the Peoria Libraries.
Do you remember how we met?
Of course I do. What you gonna tell me anyway, because it's part of the gang? So, get ahead with it.
Very well. Once upon a time, there was a lonely man in a lonely city.
Oh, God, take me now.
What's wrong?
Just get to the good part and make it snappy. I've got a hot date waiting for me backstage, and she's a real doll face.
Okay. Well, once upon a time, this lonely man walked into a used magic store and met the one person who had changed his life forever.
I'm kind of a big deal.
I'm sorry, my little friend. It wasn't you. It was an old magician.
Where do I come in?
Well, in the back storage room, the magician kept all kinds of toys and trinkets that he would not sell to the general public. These were his most prized possessions.
Right, so obviously...
And in the far back, he kept what he called, very tenderly, his junk pile.
What?
And in the far, far, far back room is where he'd set aside you.
Right, so obviously, you saw that there'd been some kind of a mistake, or I'd been mistreated, and I had some kind of a trickle in my eye, right?
No. I bought you because you were on sale, and he said you could talk.
Well, at least tell me that the shop was in Paris.
No. It was in Phoenix.
What? Well, you mean you bought me from some cuckoo old Merlin wannabe in a dusty junk shop in the desert? I sure hope my date didn't hear that. Thanks a million, Marty. I'm out of here.
Are you sure you want to go?
Well, let's just say, all the great men in the world are dead except one, and I'm not feeling well.
How about this time slot? Thursday, May. Case of death. Reserved for those special shows on the way out the door. Just a pack of men. Just wait for us in droves. Got any bright ideas?
Yes, what is it?
George would like me to help you clean your dressing room. How does it work?
What?
How do you make him talk?
Trade secret. Be careful with those.
I've got the boxes outside. I have to put them together first.
Boxes?
Yes.
Why would you need boxes?
George didn't tell you? I guess the theater can't pay you anymore than you can the theater anymore.
Take that, you rotten scoundrels! Oh, wait for me, you fools!
Get back, you ruffians, for it is I, the amazing Mortimer with his companion, Sir Thomas of Mesa, who shall thwart your evil plans and bring about your everlasting doom.
Captain, what's our next move?
They got us surrounded. Let's get behind the barricade and wait for reinforcements.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Oh, no. What shall we do? What shall we do?
Pull yourselves together, man!
Sorry, this is the first action I've ever seen.
It's okay, I've got a plan.
What's your plan?
Trolls.
Trolls?
Yes, under that bridge over there. To use your magic to summon trolls here to help us win this battle.
Use my magic?
You are a magician, aren't you?
No.
Oh, no. Oh, no, no. We're doomed now.
Sir, what shall we do? They're closing in.
There's only one thing left to do.
What?
Run!
Yes!
Come on, go!
Well, I must say, you've been given a fine imagination. What do your parents do?
I lived with my dad, and it was nice. He used to play with me, and we'd tell stories about dragons and battles. We would always win.
Used to? What happened to him?
He got really sick, and he died. I don't really like to talk about it.
I'm sorry.
Uncle George doesn't like to tell stories. I live with him.
I'm sure he takes very good care of you.
Yeah.
Hey, kid! Morty got you doing his chores?
No, I'm supposed to be helping him move out.
What?
It's okay. I'm moving out too. Uncle George told me about this school on a ranch. Told the kids, "Live and go to school together." He's gonna drive me over to go look at it tomorrow.
Sounds nice.
It could be fun.
You know, kid, sometimes in life, it seems like we don't get a fair shake, or we wish things could stay the same forever, and they just can't. But I've just got to say that as tough as it is sometimes, life has a way of working out for the best. You believe that for us, and we'll believe that for you, okay?
Okay.
Now that I've doled out my pontiferous wisdom, do you have any questions for me?
How does it work?
Magic!
Really? I have to go.
Well, it's nice to have made a new friend.
Yep.
Thomas! I think you need someone to keep you company more than I do. Stretch out your arms. Take care, old friend. See, this is how it works. There's very little mystery to it.
Bye, Mortimer.
Goodbye, Thomas. Take care.
Watch out for trolls.
Yeah, I will. Goodbye.
I'm a street sweeper. I'm a people person. I'm a good husband. I'm a good grandpa. And a movie buff. I love movies. I am Peoria, 100%. Anytime you want to start, make sure nobody's behind you, people got past you already, so you can start your engines. Let me tell you a story about me. I'm from New York, but when I came out here, I came out here with nothing. $2 in my pocket and a Snickers bar. I got on the bus one time. I wasn't doing good. You know, everybody goes through their downs. I lived in a men's shelter. I lived in the streets. For two weeks, I did the begging. I did that. I lived down 48th Street and baseline 20 years, something years ago. And what my life, what happened was, some lady came up to me and said, "Are you tired of being on the streets and all that?" I said, "Yes," and she helped me, and I never looked back. I carried clothes in my car. And when I see a homeless guy who needs a pair, I got shoes, shirts, jackets, if I see somebody who needs it. And I, sometimes my own clothes, I give them that I got in there. That's one thing I've been doing for a long time. I love what I have, and I'm gonna cherish what I have because I didn't have this. And when I hear people saying you can't do it, I say, "Well, you want to listen, go look at my story. You talking about a guy that would sit next to a heater from a building so he can keep warm." And everything that I have, I love. When our residents step outside and look and say, "Wow, look at my streets." Why not? Why not like to have your streets cleaned? Why not?
The National Archery in the Schools program brings the sport of archery to millions of students in schools across the United States. It's designed to teach international-style target archery in grades four through 12. Core content covers archery, history, safety, technique, equipment, mental concentration, core strengthening, physical fitness, and self-improvement. Archery in the Schools is a national program that started in Kentucky in 2002, with Arizona joining the program a couple years later. Arizona Game and Fish sponsors and administers the program in our state, and it's funded by special hunter education dollars from the Wildlife and Sport Fish Restoration Program. Those funds come from a federal excise tax on much of the equipment used by hunters, anglers, shooters, and boaters.
There are 48 states that participate and multiple countries, including Canada, Australia, and South Africa. Along with that, there are over 10,000 students that participate in the national tournament a year, and that number just keeps increasing. In Arizona here, we have over 100 schools that participate and over 300 archers that participate at the shoots yearly.
The program teaches a lifetime skill, and it stresses skills over technology. No matter the student's size, ability, or gender, every archer in the Archery in the Schools program uses an identical bow, identical arrows, and learns to shoot at distances that guarantee immediate success. Nearly everyone can enjoy success in archery whether or not they're the tallest, fastest, or strongest person around. The sport of archery is highly inclusive, and for many enthusiasts, it's a lifelong activity. In archery, students of all genders, abilities, and backgrounds flourish. The archery program also levels the playing field for schools. It allows small schools to compete with larger ones.
It's hard for a small school to be competitive in sports because we don't have enough kids, but we can be competitive in archery. Individuals can be competitive even if we're not competitive as a team. This is our third year with archery, and the first year, we took kids all the way to nationals. So we're very excited about the opportunities that this provides for kids that we don't have any other way of providing those kinds of opportunities.
Teaching kids has been likened to herding cats. They're all over the place, often moving to one thought before finishing the first. Archery helps teach them discipline and focus.
So they're able to focus, take those skills, and apply them throughout their life.
I learn how to focus, and I learn how to concentrate. It's just a really fun thing to do. I really enjoy it. I learn a lot from this sport. My dad, he usually texts me if he's not at the meet, "Focus." It's just really a big thing about mental. You learn how to focus your mind on just the target instead of all the distractions around you.
I think the main thing they learn is, that they're gonna take forward, is their own self-awareness and being able to set goals for themselves and reach them, and then having that focus of attention on minute things. That focus is so important when they get into a job later on.
Archery has some very basic and very important rules that kids must obey. First and foremost is...
Safety, safety, safety. That's our number-one priority. We have a very set, strict rule that we follow, and all of that is to keep the archers safe. There have actually been no major incidences in the program since the start in 2002 because of how safe we are.
We're very much strictlers about following the protocol, and one of the things we talk about a lot is following rules that keep us safety smart. And that's the thing I like the best about the archery program, is everything is designed to keep the kids safe as well as having fun.
Archery is a privilege, not a right. To be able to shoot with the team, they have to earn that right.
They have to meet the same eligibility requirements as the kids do for basketball or volleyball. They encourage each other, and they help each other with homework, and they keep up because they all want everybody to be able to participate. We have 30 archers, so that's about a third of our school involved in archery. So that's, it's a, it's a, in high demand here, and the kids are excited about it.
It's really fun, and it definitely teaches you a lot about concentration and focus, and it's really fun to do. I mean, it's not boring at all. Anybody can shoot if they really, like, want to. If they strive to do it, they can.
At one of our practices, you're gonna see kids having turns, shooting. You're gonna see, at most practices, kids going through, as a team, the 11 steps of archery that help them to improve. You're gonna see kids in between their shoot time, just kind of talking and having fun, having some social time together that they don't always get in the classroom. You're gonna see kids encouraging each other and adults encouraging kids. There's not very often that negative comments are made. Most of them are very positive, and a lot of these kids, this is the most positive thing they have during their week.
Yeah, I get a lot of support from my parents and my coaches. They all support me. Whenever they go to the meet, they at least watch one of my rounds, the coaches, and then my parents will sit there for an hour, two hours, just watching me. It's really nice to know that my family's behind me and my coaches support me. It gets you out of the school building into something funner.
Funner?
More enjoyable, I guess. I just feel like it lets the stress away from school, gives me something to do that's more useful with my time.
Well, to borrow a line from Tanner, "One of the ways we make this sport funner is to introduce 3D targets." A longtime favorite of archery hunters, these 3D targets add a little excitement to the shooting experience as well as teach about Arizona wildlife.
It ties in great with the game of fish because all the species that they shoot are actually species that we have here in the state. These kids don't know that. A lot of them, the first time they shot, they asked, "What was that?" while looking at the pronghorn antelope, and we were able to explain to them.
Where to from here? Well, some of these archers have already had their first archery deer hunt, while others are making plans to try out for JOAD, the Junior Olympic Archery Development Program. But whether or not these shooters continue in the sport, each one has learned significant life skills they can take with them forever.
Hi, I'm Jim Paxson. On tonight's show, we'll see state wildlife agencies working together for conservation. Then you'll meet the winner of the Gut Pile Raffle. That's a yucky name for a program with a good cause, hunters helping endangered California condors. Then we'll celebrate 30 years of our community fishing program at a brand-new urban lake. All that and more on Arizona Wildlife Views.
Arizona Wildlife Views is brought to you by the sale of hunting and fishing licenses and the Heritage Fund, lottery dollars working for wildlife. Some projects made possible by the Sport Fish and Wildlife Restoration Fund.
Well, I have many moments in my, in my childhood.
Every moment of our lives is a chance to understand what matters.
I had a childhood where I spent a tremendous amount of time in the outdoors.
And these are moments that matter.
I remember when I was a kid, probably eight or nine, and my dad took me on my first deer hunt.
We lived up around five different lakes, so I spent every day during the summer down on the lake fishing.
There are moments we'll always remember.
And I remember sitting there, and this bobcat came at in the Cinderella, and it was just magical, and I've been hooked ever since.
There are memories in the making.
Being able to hunt my first birds.
Stories we'll share with friends and pass down to our children. A family fun, outdoor adventure, and amazing places with abundant wildlife.
I have so many of those moments. It's really what helped shape me as a person.
Those moments are made possible by moments like these. Every day, all across North America, state wildlife agencies are leading heroic efforts. Every day, all across North America, state wildlife agencies are leading heroic efforts to restore endangered species, repair critical habitat, and maintain our nation's natural abundance of fish and wildlife for generations to come.
The states really are the cornerstone for fish and wildlife conservation across our country, really always have been. They're the laboratories of innovation. States are the champions of America's fish and wildlife. We're the voice, we're the ambassador, the caretakers and stewards of this extraordinary assemblage of fish and wildlife and outdoor recreation that we've inherited and that we want to pass on to future generations.
The leaders of those state agencies and their federal and private partners in conservation must realize they stand on the shoulders of giants. Giants of conservation and American democracy who made the most of their moments on earth. Those fathers of this great nation who designed a government that gets its power from the people, and those founders of a system of conservation that we call the North American Model.
The North American Model grew out of the concept of democracy. People own the wildlife, and therefore, it is their responsibility to manage the wildlife scientifically, not politically.
It's a system that recognizes wildlife as a natural resource belonging not to the government or the crown, but to the people who are its rightful owners.
As we built the country and we defined the authorities between the federal government and the states, under public trust doctrine, the wildlife became under the state authority.
Public trust doctrine gives states the privilege and the responsibility to hold wildlife in trust for the people.
It is fundamental to the democratic federalist principles that the states manage the wildlife for the people. That is a product and a function of this great democracy that was established here, right here, 200 years ago.
Of course, most people have never heard of the North American Model or how it evolved over the last century. They're not aware of the Pittman-Robertsen Act or other mechanisms of sportsmen-funded conservation. Few Americans would recognize the names of conservation trailblazers, Gifford Pinchot and George Bird Grinnell. And those who do speak of Theodore Roosevelt and Aldo Leopold likely know only the trimmings of their contributions to the most successful conservation system the world has ever known.
Look at all them out there. It's amazing.
But people do appreciate wildlife. And as heirs to North America's wildlife legacy, they're fortunate to have conservation leaders who understand their critical role in the world today.
These jobs are an extraordinary privilege. There's no doubt about that. That's absolutely undeniable. But these jobs are not about being a director. They're really about being a steward. They're about being a champion and enabler for this extraordinary group of professionals that are biologists and technicians and game wardens and communication specialists and outdoor recreation professionals, and helping to inspire them to do more for our home ground.
Well, you know, it cuts both ways because of the brilliant work they do, the incredible entrepreneurship that they employ, the opportunities they seek, the risks they take. It's just amazing when you have people like that that are working for you, but really doing the work that you dreamed about your whole life. If you can't be inspired by that, you know, you really need to wake up and ask yourself, "What's life all about?" I'm also proud of a system that has restored wildlife across our nation through the 20th century at a level that nobody ever dreamed possible.
For more than 100 years, state wildlife agencies have had a huge role in transforming this continent, from one that exploited and exhausted its precious natural resources to one that's blessed with a wealth of wildlife, thanks to sustainable, science-based management and conservation.
We've got the most successful blackfoot restoration effort of all the efforts in the country, here in Arizona. When you try to describe the achievements of Arizona Game and Fish, it becomes an almost impossible task because there are so many diverse accomplishments.
Those successes are made possible by our North American Model of Wildlife Conservation. It's built around laws like the Pittman-Robertsen Act, which generates billions of dollars a year for conservation from an excise tax on the sale of guns and ammo. Yet today, conservation is at a crossroads.
Huge, huge challenges, absolutely. And as our society becomes more urban and we're more split from our connection with nature, there's enormous challenges from that. Population growth creates enormous challenges. The demands that are placed on our natural resources are greater than they've ever been.
No doubt, there's a litany of challenges, and they're big. As I reflect on 20 or 25 years in this profession, the challenges that we confront, they're bigger, they're more complex, and really, at scales that are absolutely unprecedented in what we've seen in the past. And so, that creates enormous challenges for us. It also creates enormous opportunities.
Opportunities to draw on the source of past success so that one-time challenges become a brighter future.
When I look back on the history of wildlife conservation, there are special moments in time that are unique, that are turning points, that 50 or 100 years from now, people will write about. Today, right now, this is one of those moments.
He's ready to go in his furrow.
Once again, North America is looking for leaders to define a path forward.
It starts by doing good conservation work on the ground every day, 24/7, and we do. We've done a marvelous job through the 20th century. The job is going to be bigger in the 21st century. There are a lot more species at hand that need to be addressed, but the states are still going to be the players that have the resources on the ground to be that incubator to bring forth the conservation of the future.
We have to think about what's going to need in 100 years, and that's what's probably the biggest challenge and could be the biggest missed opportunity, that we get so focused on the problems of today that we don't change and anticipate the needs of 100 years from
When times get tough, this is what we've got to remember. This is what we've got to keep in mind, our future generations. We do it for them. The kids, Sammy and Marilyn Joe, these grandkids, and all of the kids in our country just like this. Right, kids?
Wah!
If our nation's wildlife legacy is to prevail through the 21st century, our conservation leaders will have to seize the moment.
Every moment does matter, but I think it's less about thinking about those moments as a defining moment than thinking about the fact that the work we do is measured in generational scales. We are planting the proverbial tree to have shade for somebody that's not even born yet. The defining moments in conservation are usually identified after the fact. We always need to be looking for them.
Any day spent fishing is considered a good one, but for 11-year-old Vinnie Pousatary, this free trip to Lake Powell was the result of doing the right thing at the right time.
I got drawn for a deer hunting in the Kaibab, and they were protecting the California condors, and so, if we turned in a gut pile, then there was a raffle for a fishing trip, and I won the raffle, and now I'm here.
Vinnie, his dad Peter, and sister Hannah spent the day on the lake with Chris Parish of the Peregrine Fund, the lead agency in the recovery of the California condor.
I think anytime you get to, well, especially with a trip like this, meet new people, meet people that mean something to me just because of the effort that they made on the Kaibab, and to see it be a young man like that and to hear the story about their hunt, to get to meet them, come out and spend the day on the water, talking to that young man and watching him the way he fished is everything that's good about the world in the future. I mean, that lights my fire because it's that kind of next generation that's going to make this thing work, and it's going to make all conservation work.
The California condor is the largest land bird in North America with a wingspan of over nine feet. The birds were facing extinction when in 1987, the last 22 living in the wild were captured. Those birds were used to begin a captive breeding program that now numbers more than 400 birds, about half of which are in wild populations in Arizona, California, Utah, and Mexico. In 1996, condors from the program were released near Vermillion Cliffs in northern Arizona, and though their numbers continue to rise, there are still obstacles to overcome in their recovery.
Arizona population is doing great, constantly growing with some setbacks throughout the year. Our major obstacle in establishing this population is lead poisoning, but the birds are doing great. They've answered all the major questions that we had in the early days of the program. Will they find their own food? Will they find their own nesting sites? Will they nest? They've answered all those questions, and they're doing great. If we can just keep on reducing lead exposure in their range, we are well on our way to a full recovery species.
Lead exposure is the number-one threat to condors. These huge birds are scavengers that rely entirely on animal remains they find in the wild, which is why the voluntary lead reduction program has been so important to their recovery.
The big focus of the condor program is to get the lead out of the field. What these people did that we took today, they shot a deer with a lead bullet, and then they took the effort to pack the gut pile to us at our check station. And for that, we put their name into a drawing, and they won this as a raffle prize. We had several prizes this last year, and this was one of the cool ones that we got to go and enjoy together.
Along with the raffle prizes, Arizona Game and Fish offered hunters who drew a deer tag on the Kaibab a coupon for one box of non-lead ammunition. The program is supported in part by the Heritage Fund.
Since the early 2000s is when we first identified lead on the Kaibab as being a problem for condors, and immediately following that, we shared those data that we had collected in the field with the game and fish, and they started the program in 2003, educating the hunters and offering them all the information from all the scientific research that we have done, and then publishing that in the hunting regulations and beginning to ask people to use non-lead and sweetening the pot by actually offering a free box. In addition to that, the gut pile program, painfully called the Gut Pile Raffle, makes it sound like you're going to win a gut pile, but the Gut Pile Raffle was an effort, again, to offer people another opportunity to participate. And now that the condors are expanding north into Utah, Division of Natural Resources in Utah is doing exactly the same thing, modeled after Arizona's program. So, those are the efforts currently in place.
Surveys show that about 90% of deer hunters took one of the two measures to reduce the amount of spent lead ammunition in the condor's core range, and the efforts are paying off. In 2014, there were more than 70 condors in Arizona.
And then, once you have the head, I'll set him in that. Okay? Set him in your lap.
On this day, three new birds are being added to the wild population from breeding sites outside of Arizona. Before their release, the condor team attaches identification numbers as well as transmitters so they can track the birds.
We have two birds that are two years of age and one bird that is one year of age. We supplement, it's a reintroduction. So, we have wild breeding. We've had wild fledged birds ever since 2003, every year, and then throughout the year, we release captive bred birds to build up a wild population. We release usually six to 12, 15 birds a year.
Condors generally lay one egg every other year, so their reproduction rate is slow. This fledgling's wing motion is a signal to its parents that it's time for a meal, but right now, it doesn't seem to be making much of an impression on the adults. Later this year, the condor team will capture the young bird so it can be fitted with its own transmitter and ID number.
These birds can fly 200 miles a day. A lot of the core range is right here in the Vermillion Cliffs where we are, the southern extent of their range all the way to the south end of the Grand Canyon. We've had birds fly to Flaming Gorge, Wyoming, which is beyond their range, but a juvenile bird could catch the right wind and follow the right eagle anywhere. But roughly, we always say, Flagstaff to St. George and everywhere in between.
Condors are very social and inquisitive birds, and they can often be spotted in groups near Lee's Ferry, where Navajo Bridge makes an attractive, if not sometimes precarious, roosting spot. Still, it's an impressive sight when the birds open their giant wings to catch the warming rays of the early morning sun or soar on the thermals rising from the canyon floor. A huge cooperative effort has gone into reintroducing and maintaining these birds, and none is more important than the hunters who are helping to reduce their exposure to lead.
It's so simple, and the great thing is that Arizona has completely embraced the voluntary program. There is no thought of a law to make where we're not going, where we're going to ban lead ammunition, which a lot of people are afraid of. California did that. We're not California. Our hunters have proven to us that through education and understanding that they can change on their own without being told that they must do something. We've had, for the last seven years, 85 to 90% of our hunters have participated in lead reduction actions to save our condors.
Meanwhile, back at Lake Powell, the Pousatary family is wrapping up a great day on the lake, thanks to Vinnie.
Daddy outfished his dad, the guide, and the game and fish guys. So, yeah, we had a great time. You know, the more people we can communicate with and let them know who we are, what we're about in conservation, and when the hunters and fishermen find out that we're just like they are and we've just set ourselves to this goal of recovering the condor, they're right there with us. It's just a matter of how do you contact the masses in that way? And this is a good way to do that, by taking people fishing, and hopefully, they'll talk
Today, we are in the city of Maricopa, here at the Copper Sky Recreation Complex. This is a brand-new park and brand-new lake just recently built. The grand opening is actually today, but the park officially opens tomorrow, so we have a sneak preview here today. This park has a five-acre lake that does allow fishing. This lake will be stocked on an every-other-week basis from mid-September through mid-June. As part of the grand opening celebration, we're having a fishing clinic that's open to the public. Anybody who wants to come and try fishing for the first time for free can do so. They just have to come in and sign in. They can borrow a fishing pole, borrow some bait, get some information about the park, and the clinic will run today from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, as of January 1st, 2014, the program name has changed from the Urban Fishing Program to the Community Fishing Program. And the reason this program exists is because not everybody can get out to the big lakes, up to the White Mountains, to the Colorado River, to go fishing. So, what we want to do is we want to bring fishing to the people where they live. So, we come to these neighborhood parks out here, and we provide fish into the lakes so people can have an opportunity to go fishing, a nice, inexpensive, close-to-home, safe opportunity to come catch a quality fish. And these are our healthy fish right off the farm, good to eat, and very delicious. Right now, there are 36 lakes in the Community Fishing Program. These lakes are all across the state. We have lakes in the Phoenix area. We have a lake in Payson, here in the city of Maricopa, down in Tucson, and also, we've expanded into the Yuma area as well. There are four parks down in Yuma that are now part of the Community Fishing Program. Once this clinic is over, people do need to have a fishing license here. Kids under the age of 10 can fish for free. Kids 10 to 17 do need the $5 combo. Kids 10 to 17 do need the $5 combo hunt and fish license to fish. And everyone age 18 and over does need a fishing license. So I've been a part of the Community Fishing Program for over eight years now and I love it. This is just a fabulous opportunity of reaching a part of the population that that may not normally get an opportunity to come fishing, that here we are right in their backyard, they can walk here with their pole, with their bait, and come catch a fish.
The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Hunt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council liaison Acosta.
Here.
And council liaison Gaetres.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is the presentation of certificates to board and commission members. And I would like to ask Councilmember Mike Finn, he is the Chair of the Council Subcommittee for Boards and Commissions, to join me on the chamber floor.
So we have one presentation this evening, but as I like to do before we present any of these, I like to thank all of our volunteers. We have over 20 boards and commissions and over 100 volunteers that help us do the work that we would no way be able to do on our own. So every time I come up here and hand one of these out, I like to thank everyone that volunteers for the city and all of the help that they that they provide for us. And I'm doubling all of the volunteers' pay. Thank you. I got one out in the audience. So this is for Mike Heath for the Design Review Board. So if you'd come on down. Thank you, sir.
We will now proceed to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes items that require a public hearing. If there is any member of the public present who wants to address a public hearing on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. This item will be removed from consent and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public that would like to have an item removed from consent? Right, seeing none. Counsel, is there anything to be removed from consent? Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business, item 11R. This is a public hearing, rezoning Layton Residential 6990 West Tacoma Drive. Mr. Tyne?
Thank you, Mayor. And Chris Hockus, our Planning and Community Development Director, will provide information
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, members of the mayor and city council. Item 11R, this is a rezone filed by the property owners Mitchell Layton and Elizabeth Baldwin. They, it's for a property located at 6990 West Tacoma Drive, roughly at about three lots east of the northeast corner of 71st Avenue and Tacoma Drive. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from its current zoning district of General Agricultural to SR 35 or Suburban Ranch 35. And the purpose of the rezone is to facilitate the construction of a custom home on this on this on this lot. The lot in question is about 1.16 acres in size. Okay, the graphic on the left is the general plan land use map. The designation for the property, as is the surrounding area, is a state density residential or 02 units per acre. This is typified by larger lots in a residential semi-rural context. So when we do a rezone, we look to see that the desired district that we're contemplating rezone advances and conforms the general plan designation. So for this designation, correlating zoning districts that are typified by this designation includes, if you look at the bottom left-hand corner, the box in yellow, these are zoning districts that typically advance this designation of the general plan. They include districts like Ag SR 43, SR 35, which is the district that the applicant is intending to rezone the property to, and so forth and down the line. SR 35 is a suburban ranch district. 35 signifies the minimum lot size of 35,000 square feet, which is a little shy of an acre. Acres, 43,000 square feet roughly. The graphic on the right, that's the existing zoning in the area. On the bottom left-hand corner, you can see the property identified in red, that's the Layton Residence, currently it's zoned General Agricultural. That is a what we call holding zone. It's typically where properties are left in a less developed state until a development proposal comes on board. But you can see some of the zoning in the area. The properties to the west are zoned SR 35. Property to the east are 135. Essentially, the difference between R135 and SR 35 is suburban ranch allows a few more of the kind of the semi-rural uses that like, I think, you're allowed some animals and so forth that are allowed on the property. It's a little different. The purpose of this graphic here is just to compare the Ag District, which is what their current zoning district is, with the SR 35 District. So the Layton Residence, they are desirous to construct a custom home on the property. They've developed some plans for the for the custom home and they found the Ag District standards to be a little confining. You'll recall I mentioned that the Ag District is really a district that's set up for more of a rural context. The standards are more confining. They look for more expansive setbacks and so forth. So if you direct your attention to the areas in bold, you can see some of the significant differences between Ag and SR 35. For example, you know, there's a reduction in setback for the front, side, and rear and the lot coverage or the amount of the lot that you can develop is higher in SR 35 than Ag. Ag at 10% is very confining. So the Laytons are seeking to have standards that are consistent with the neighboring properties to the west. So like all rezones, they go through a public outreach process. We provide notification at when we get the application and also when it's time to go to hearing. And we notify all properties within a 600-foot radius and all HOAs within a one-mile radius. We did have a neighborhood meeting that was held on the 24th of January at Peoria City Hall and there were no members of the public in attendance. Throughout this case, we received two emails of, we've characterized as general inquiry. They were just asking, what is this proposal about? But we haven't got any any emails or correspondence with any expressed opposition. We had a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 1st. At the public hearing, there were no speakers present from the general public and after deliberation, the commission recommended approval of the case with a 7-0 vote. Key findings in this case, the rezone conforms to the general plan estate residential designation. The SR 35 district is compatible with neighboring properties and as I indicated, is a district that advances the general plan designation. So with that, mayor and council, we are recommending that the council concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the rezone of 1.16 acres from General Agricultural to Suburban Ranch. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Hockus? All right, seeing none, I declare this public hearing open. This is a public hearing. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this idea, this item, please make your way to the podium. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Counsel, was there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Item 11R passes unanimously. All right, next item is 12R. This is also a public hearing, Trenton Park, 99th Avenue and Olive Avenue. Mr. Tyne?
Great. And Mr. Hockus will again provide the presentation on the action item.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, item 12R, this is also a proposed rezone. This is filed by Bowman Consulting on behalf of Garrett Walker Homes. Garrett Walker Homes, as you as you probably know, is an Arizona-based home builder. They've built a number of projects in the area. Some of those that come to mind are the Olive Park at 113th and Olive, also Townley Park at 89th and Olive near the near the fries. The request today, this pertains to a property, a vacant infill property of about 9.58 gross acres. It's identified in red on the screen there. It's located roughly at the terminus of 99th and Olive Avenue. So the request this this evening is to rezone the property from its current zoning of General Agricultural to a planary development or PAD. If approved, the zoning, the rezoning would facilitate a proposed 38-lot, single-family residential development. So a little bit more about the site context. The property again is identified in red. It's directly east of Fire Station Number Four. It's also bounded to the north by the New River Corridor. On the east side is the existing development of Rio Estates, which is a development of one- and two-story homes, generally 6,000 square feet and above. And then to the south, areas south of Olive are part of a vacant area of unincorporated Maricopa County island. Okay, the graphic to the left, this is the general plan land use map. So the designation for this property, including, as you can see with the darker orange, the property is north of Olive, is designated as medium-density residential or 5 to 8 dwellings per acre. So this is a designation that's that's kind of a moderate density. It's typified by small lot residential, it could be attached, single-family, and it could even be multifamily or apartments in the proper context. Some of the correlating zoning districts that advance this designation would include multifamily where it's appropriate. It could include our smallest lot, single-family district of R16, 6,000 square foot lots, or a PAD which could accommodate a number of different lot sizes. The graphic on the right, that is the current zoning. The graphic on the right, that is the current zoning. Just to point out here, the zoning to the east of the property, which is the Rio Estates, that's currently zoned R 16. Some of the neighborhoods to the north as well with that dark orange, that's, that's R 16, 6,000 square foot lots. And then you can see to the south, Maricopa County Island, and then the Fire Station to the west, zone, actually zoned, single-family, R 18. Mayor, council, this is the conceptual development plan that Garrett Walker has submitted to the city, currently going through a preliminary plat review. Again, as I indicated, it's 38 single-family lots. It does yield a gross density of about 3.97 units per acre. The minimum lot size in this PAD is 5,175 square feet, although the lots range between 5175 and 9,040 square feet. Although most of the lots, majority are between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet in size. Now, the maximum height, like typical with most single-family areas, is 30 feet or two stories. I have an asterisk because I'll talk later on, there are some lots that will be restricted to single stories. I'll talk about that aspect of the development in a minute. Primary access for this development will be at Olive Avenue. 99th Avenue, where it terminates at Olive, there will, that's where the entry into the development will occur. Other points of access will be a emergency access along Olive. For westbound traffic, there will be a right-turn pocket that's required on Olive. So as part of this development, they're going to be required to not only dedicate right-ofway on, on Olive Avenue, their half-street, but also construct all the half-street improvements, including six-foot sidewalk, the right-turn pocket that I indicated, and the entry point into development. Development also includes a number of small amenity areas. There is an amenity area to the west, which will consist of removable soccer goals in a, in a turfed area. The amenity area into the middle is a play structure, Ramada and barbecue area. And then the amenity area to the northwest is a turfed area with a pedestrian gate for future access, you know, for a future trail corridor along, along the New River. Public outreach, as I, just like with the last case, all properties within a 600-foot radius were notified. A public hearing was held on October 11th at Sun Valley School at 6 o'clock PM. We didn't have any members of the public in attendance. We did have the council member for the district and staff there. Throughout the course of the case, we have not received any correspondence in opposition to this case. We did receive a letter of support for the Peoria Unified District. They've indicated to the city that, that they have worked out the terms of a developer assistance agreement with the applicant, so they have indicated their support for the project. This case went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 15th, 2018. We didn't have any speakers present from the general public that evening, and the commission recommended approval of the case. So some of the key findings that we've identified is that the, the PAD does conform to the general plan, including the goals and policies for infill development. The request conforms to the medium-density residential designation, and we believe with the standards will enable a development that is compatible with surrounding areas. So now let me talk about the new condition. We've passed out a revised draft ordinance to you, so I want to talk about a new condition, condition number six. So after the planning commission hearing, we were apprised of a concern by councilmember Leone about some of the lots, particularly along the eastern side, lots that would, would front one-story homes on the real estate side. We, we had an experience not too long ago down the, on, with the Townley Park development that even though we didn't have any objections during that entitlement process, when homes started going up, we did receive a concern about, concerns about privacy from two-story homes. So councilmember Leone, to his credit, wanted to get in front of this issue, and he expressed his concern, and, and kudos to the applicant, Ms. Oberholzer and, and Garrett Walker Homes. They met with Mr. Leone, and they agreed to self-restrict some of the lots to one-story. So the lots that are indicated in yellow on the screen, which include lots nine to 11, lots 13 through 16, and lots 19, we've entered a stipulation that would memorialize the commitment by Garrett Walker, that those lots be restricted to one-story. So you'll see that on your revised ordinance. And with that, mayor and council, recommendation tonight is to concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the rezone of 9.5 acres from General Agricultural to planary development, subject to conditions one through six. And without all taking questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Leone?
Yeah, Chris, I, go back to the last one. One of the yellow ones.
Councilmember Leone, the yellow ones correspond with the stipulation, those are the lots that would specifically be restricted to one-story. So those lots on the other side, on the Rio Estate side, have one-story homes. So you'd have a one-story home backing up to a one-story home.
And how many, how many ways in and out on Olive?
Councilmember Leone, there is one access point that's required into this development. That access point occurs at 99th Avenue. There is an emergency-only access point that is at the southeast corner of the development at Olive as well.
And is there any other way to go in?
Given the, the small size of the property, the irregular shape of the property, and the number of lots, a second access wasn't warranted in this case.
Are they going to build another street along the fire station there?
Councilmember Leone, the, the applicant's not required to build another street, they're required to complete their half-street improvements. And what that means is, the, the area along Olive Avenue, along their frontage, they're going to be required not only to dedicate that additional right-ofway, but construct the right-turn pocket, and reconstruct the, the six-foot sidewalk along that corridor. So they will improve their frontage along their development.
Well, I got to tell you, Chris, I've talked to a lot of developers since I've been here, and this is probably the second-best one that you could work with and come across something and, and agree with them without any calling names. I think it's great that we could work with these people, and I'd like to see you stick around. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, and I declare this public hearing open. If there is a member of the public who would like to speak to this issue, please proceed to the podium. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Council, further discussion, or do I have a motion? Councilmember Leone, would you like to make a motion? Motion? Would you like to make a motion to accept?
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
There we go. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. I do have a speaker request form from Mr. James Dibler. Sir, please proceed to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, in Council District Five. I would like to see Peoria Station to get revived with new, with brand-new shops and more opportunities with more business owners to open up, up a shop at this center. I remember the shopping center was built in 1987 as Safeway, as the only supermarket that serves this shopping center, along with Apple Gold Grocery Stores across the street. This shopping center is running down and needed much remodeling to attract new businesses. Finally, I would like to see a Bassett supermarket at 67 Avenue and Peoria Avenue on the southwest corner to replace the former Safeway Grocery Store. That Bassett will help make this shopping center nicer and provide alternatives for customers to shop. I think Bassett is doing a good job on renovating stores to look like the more upscale stocks this store, if the Bassett plan doesn't work out. And I think the city of Peoria should consider putting other stores at 67 and Peoria Avenue in order to revive that Peoria Station Shopping Center. Finally, we need to make sure that employers do sternly against people with disabilities, including autism. Many small and big corporations within the Phoenix metropolitan area failed to apply with the Marigame with Disability Act of 1990, recalling that they add wheelchair rent and other complications to meet the needs of the disability community. The city of Peoria and the state of Arizona need to follow the law to allow persons with disabilities to have a fair shot in the workforce. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dibler. And with that, we will now move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor. And just one item, council has long expressed their interest in preparing Peoria's youth and our future workforce in a number of different creative ways, and we have a wonderful story to illustrate in a partnership between our Peoria firefight and medical department and the Peoria Unified School District. And specifically, we wanted to identify and recognize one of our key captains here, Danny Camella. And with that, I'm going to introduce Chief Bobby Reese to discuss the Career and Technical Education Award.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne, and good evening, mayor and council. It's with great honor that I said before you, the, the Peoria Unified School District is receiving a very prestigious national award, which is the Excellence in Action Award that's given by the Career and Technical Education Program Association. And the reason we're up here is that the school district will be sending Captain Camella on their behalf to receive this prestigious award because it's aimed at the fire science program within the Peoria Unified School District. And it is great honor that I introduce to you Captain Camella, Danny Camella. Danny has been with the program since 2003. He has led, managed, and taught the program that has been extremely successful. With that, let me turn it over to Danny, so he can tell you a little bit about the program and the successes that the program has had.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Like the chief said, my name is Danny Camella. I'm captain with the fire department and been teaching at the school district since about 2005. For those who don't know, career and technical education is kind of the way things are going. And we were lucky enough to put in for this award, the district put in for it, in the area of public safety and law enforcement. So to date, we've had about 50 students hired on fire departments, US Forest Service, Army, Navy, Air Force, go on, that we know about. City of Peoria has benefited greatly from it. I think we have four firefighters, one of our admin assistants all came through the program. Our relationship started, we can't do this alone, with the budgets of the district and the equipment that's needed and the expertise that's needed, so our partnership with the fire department has made this grow exponentially. We were the first truck, or the first school district in the state to have their own fire truck, and that was with our partnership from the city of Peoria. Equipment, old self-contained breathing apparatuses, and not only that, the expertise that the city provides us, not only with training, crews coming in, actually teaching students, internships, we think we've had an internship every year with the city of Peoria. Students come, they ride along, they, they work, they get to know the job, and we're seeing it now, after, you know, 13 or 14 years, these students are starting to come into the career fields. So without our partnership together, without your support, the city's support, and the district's support, we wouldn't be getting this award. So I'm looking forward to going to, never been to Washington, so we're going in April. So, thank you for your support, chief, thank you for your support, city's support. We hope to keep growing the program. I get calls every year that students, hey, I got hired. And then I look, and they're taller than me, and, so it's nice, I appreciate the support of the city. On behalf of the city and the district, I'm going to be proud to represent you all in Washington.
Thank you, Danny. The Career Technical Education Association is an accrediting body for technical education, so it's quite a prestigious award, and we're very proud of Danny that he's, he is the program. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations and thanks for all that you do. It's really meaningful. Did you want to say something?
I think we both did.
Okay, wait, wait, don't go away. Come back, you guys, come back.
No, it's, it's not that easy, Danny.
Your audience awaits.
Yeah. So I just want to make a couple of comments. Number one, as the CFO at Peoria Unified, when, was involved with this program, it, it was truly an amazing program. CTU in general is an amazing program, but this one, I thought, was, was very unique. And a lot of people don't know this, but Danny and I actually went to high school together. And there's a lot of people taller than you, Danny.
Yes, true.
A lot. But the reason I mention that is, is knowing Danny in high school, this was, this was his only passion. So I remember your first ride-along, remember that?
Yep.
Yeah, so do I. I won't tell any stories, Danny. But the reason I mention that honestly and truly is that Danny has a passion for this, he's always had a passion for this, and I can't think of anybody better to be teaching that class at Sunrise Mountain than, than you. I think you did an amazing job up there, I heard accolades. At the time that I was there, I've heard accolades from students, and you've done a fantastic job. It pains me to say it, Danny, you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
You knew it wouldn't go any other way, right?
No.
I wish you all, I wish you all the best, and DC will be calling DC and let them know that you're coming.
Yeah, they need to know.
Yep, because Washington will not be the same after you arrive. So congratulations, very proud of you, man, did a great job.
Thank you.
Fantastic job.
Councilmember Ben Sparker?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to say congratulations to you, Captain Camella. Your passion definitely shows. I don't have the backstory on any of this, but we feel it. Okay, I look forward to that. Enjoy DC, thank you for your commitment to this program, and congratulations on a fantastic, building a fantastic partnership with PUSD. Just one more example of how meaningful these partnerships are. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I think we're done now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain, thank you, Chief Reese, and that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to reports from city council, and we'll start with Youth Council Liaison, Acosta.
Thank you, mayor. So I would like to congratulate Captain Danny Camella for receiving this award and the entire CTU program. I can testify that this program has really, it, it exposed our youth for, for more than just learning inside a classroom. It gives them an opportunity to, on, like, you know, what is it, on hand, hands-on, hands-on, there we go, hands-on work in the career that they're, you know, building to, to work in later on after they graduate. So congratulations, and talking about DC, some of the council members and a few of the youth advisory board members went to Washington DC March 10th, and we came back on the following Wednesday. We were there for a conference, and it's just truly amazing to see how many youth are so involved in their community, not just in Peoria. Peoria is awesome as it is, we have a lot of youth that are involved, but around our nation, there are so many youth trying to change the world, and it's so inspiring to see that we are just creating this culture of leadership. So yay to that. And then I just got hired with the city of Peoria for the Little Learners, so yay. I'll be getting a little bit more of the city, so that's all that I have.
All right, thank you, councilmember Patena.
Thank you, mayor. On March 7th, I attended a morning with the mayor at Amethyst Gardens, it's a care facility. There's about 30 people there. They were actually very engaged, had a lot of good questions. Anthony Alejandro was there, Karen Halsted was there, Commander Bazio, Andy Granger, Eric Strunk, and, and the police chief. And it's always nice seeing city staff show up at these events, shows that they're engaged in what's going on in the city, and I think our citizens in these programs enjoy seeing city staff there as well, so thank you all for, for attending. On March 9th, I attended the Boards and Commission Appreciation Event at the On March 9th, I attended the Boards and Commission Appreciation Event at the Arizona Broadway Theater. I want to thank the city clerk's office for putting on a really great event. I, the word, the feedback that I got was that everybody had a great time. It was a, and a good show. March 16th, I attended the city council workshop with the city council as well as senior staff members. We put together some of our short-term and long-term goals. City staff, our senior staff told us, you know, what some of their thoughts and ideas were as we continue to move forward as a city. And they put a good program together and a lot was accomplished. So I appreciated that very much. It was a really good meeting. And March 14th, the Peoria Fire Department that's housed up at Lake Pleasant actually saved the lives of two 19-year-olds whose boats capsized at Lake Pleasant. This council believes in giving our fire and our police the best training that they can possibly get. And I think what happened on March 14th is a good example that that type of training is paying off very well for us. Two 19-year-olds get to live their life and hopefully will grow old. And then also, the last thing is congratulations to Captain Camella. I hear his name a lot, and I know you do a lot for the city. So thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Binsbacher.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to, attended the Boards and Commissions Award Ceremony or Recognition Event at Arizona Broadway Theater. It was a fantastic event. And I just want to say thank you to all of our volunteers. We definitely can't do what we do as effectively as we do it without all of our volunteers. Also, I went to DC. I had the privilege of going to Washington, DC with some of our youth and Councilman Edwards. And I can honestly say that there were a lot of different sessions and meetings. It was very productive time. We got to meet with Senator Flake, quickly with Congressman Gosar and some of his staff. We met with West Valley Partners, some of the generals, Air Force generals, that talked about the F-35 mission here at Luke Air Force Base and how important that is. And boy, it sure does remind us the amazing work that is being done right here in our backyard that is affecting us on a national level. And we were there to express our support and learn more about that amazing effort. But the bottom line is going to these conferences is time well spent because it really does give us an opportunity to take advantage of some training, to help us become better leaders, better representatives, better elected officials. And so I just am so grateful for the opportunity to do that every time because I learn new things. Let's see, the workshop on the 16th was time well spent, very productive. And thank you to staff and all of the council members for putting in that time. It really does help us to move forward with a plan. And finally, we have a Bark Fest coming up in Sonoran Mountain Ranch, which is the community in my district that is as far down 67th Avenue as you can go, as far north as you can go. And that is on Saturday morning from 8:00 to 11:00. And we look forward to a nice crowd and plenty of furry family members. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Finn?
Thank you. I also attended the Boards and Commissions Event, which I thought was phenomenal. You made an excellent choice on your musical event there. I will congratulate you on that. I thought it was fantastic. And the study session on Friday, I also thought was very, very productive. I do want to thank staff for all of their work. That's a lot of work to put into for that event. And it was very, very well done on staff's part. I thought you guys did a fantastic job. And I appreciated the collaboration from members of the council in discussing some of those issues. Didn't get them all done, but I thought it was a very, very good session. I also want to thank the police department. There was a community event on Thursday, the 15th, at Oakwood Elementary. Very, very well attended by the community. It was a very impressive turnout. But even more impressive was the presentation that PD did on neighborhood safety and different things. Commander Kristoffson had him just eating out of his hand. It was just, it was a fantastic presentation. I always enjoy watching that. And Captain Camella, congratulations, sir. Very well done, very well done. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to congratulate a police officer this evening, Officer John Pyatt. I happened to watch, I was watching television last week and noticed that he was the story of the week on television. He was able to, there was a young family that had one of their storage units broken into, and their, all of their baby clothing, furniture for their unborn child was stolen just three weeks before their birth. And so Officer went and out onto Facebook, contacted some local businesses, and was able to rally the troops and not only replaced the stuff that was stolen, but was able to get a new crib, bags and bags full of clothing, and a new dump truck for their unborn son. So I just want to congratulate the officer for a well-deserved job. And Chief, if you can thank him on, I'm sure, all of us on our behalf, very well deserved job. On the 8th, I was able to attend the lunch with the councilmen over at Great Hearts. It's the first time I'd been able to have lunch over there. And it was just a great opportunity. We'd have about 10 to 15 kids from that school attend. And it's just, it's always amazing to listen to the ideas that these young minds have. And what was really interesting, in all the years that I've been doing this, was the first time that I had a young woman that was extremely involved in the future planning of our city. So I had connected her with Chris Hockus on our 10-year master plan. And so I know that Chris, so thank you for sending her that information because she truly wanted to read it from top to bottom. We told her how long it was, and she said, I don't care how long, I have to stay up. I want to read the 10-year plan. So thank you for sending it out to her. That evening, I went over to the Public Safety Building, and with the help of Commander Bezio, we did a tour of the facility with a local Boy Scout troop. There was about 16 scouts, along with their families. So I want to thank Commander Bezio for arranging that. They had a phenomenal time. They got to tour the facility. They just had a really great time. I was also able to attend the Board and Commission Event. And Councilman Patena, good choice on music. They were absolutely phenomenal. And as Councilman Binsbacher said, we attended the National League of Cities. It was just action-packed. From the time we landed till the time we took off, it was topics from future marijuana, first-tier suburbs, opiate explosion across the country, just topics that are touching all of our cities on a daily basis. So it was really nice to see what other cities across the country were, how they were dealing with these issues, and gave me some insight to be able to bring back and talk to our staff on how we're, you know, if we're addressing these and be ready for these if they happen to come to the city. But what most impressed me the most was the youth, not only our four members that went, but the 300-plus students from across the country that attended. It's the highest number of students that they've had at the National League of Cities Conference. So I just want to commend Meili and Cassidy for attending and really spearheading some of the efforts for our youth in the city. It just means so much for us on council to know that our city is going to be in safe and good hands in the future. And then lastly, this morning, I had the great honor of attending the ladybug release over at the Sunrise Mountain Library. There's about 300 kids there. They did, there was thousands and thousands of ladybugs being released. But I think the highlight was the opportunity for me to present the Friends of the Library Volunteer of the Year Award to a young 13-year-old gentleman that has been volunteering at the library for, I think, three years, and has been involved in the library in over seven years. So his name was Ethan Dokken. And I just want to congratulate him and his family for the phenomenal work that he's doing, volunteer work. Again, if this is what we have to look forward as our youth engagement in our city, we are in good hands, Mayor. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. The workshop, the council workshop that several council members have mentioned, I truly think it was the best that I've ever attended in all the years that I've been on council. And I just want to say thank you, first of all, Jeff, to you for providing the leadership for this staff to work out just some amazing things that our city has in store for us. Some things for us to work towards and some goals, and some financial planning to make it possible. It's got to be the whole package. And I just really appreciate your leadership in that. And then all of the directors and other staff members who worked to put that plan together. It was really, I just went home about three feet off the floor. I was so happy. Theater Works, I attended a gala a couple of weeks ago, and they kicked off their new season. It was great fun. But more than that, I truly believe in the arts for so many things. They're human, they touch us at our very core. They're such builders for our youth, for our children. They, I mean, you could just go on and on with the list of benefits of all of the arts. But this particular case, if you don't have plans for your children for the summer, and you're going to pay for babysitting perhaps anyway, you might consider checking out the summer classes for kids at Theater Works. I know my grandkids, they're, they've advanced past the classes at this, at their age now, but they started when they were about five years old there. And I don't know what they would be without that. Maybe they would be fine. But I can tell you that they're self-confident young people now. They can speak in public. They certainly lead their classes. They lead their schools. And I, and they have a great time performing, whether it's theater or a dance company or what. I just think that, I thank Theater Works that they were here and present when those children were of that age. And I can't say enough about getting your kids involved in the theater or some of the other amazing art opportunities that we have here in our city through our libraries. We have some good stuff going. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Leonie?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I also attended the Boards of Commission, and it was great. The food was great, and the entertainment was great, with the Jersey Boys. If nothing else, the Jersey Boys were just great, and the food was even better. Just want to mention that I also went to Benavia Luncheon. And again, they had some good speakers there. And the food there was also great. If nothing else, the food was great, and the speakers were doing a great job. And I think everybody should go to that Benavia Luncheon when they have it. Also, I attended the council workshop on March 16th, and it was a great workshop. And I appreciate the people who put it on. Don't forget, this Saturday, March 24th, from 8:00 to 10:00 at Cheyenne Elementary, we got that shredder thing going on. So come on down and bring your, all your boxes and whatever you have, and get rid of all that stuff that you don't want anybody else to see. Also, on April 14th, we have an annual park event in Scotland Yard Park, and they're going to show Coco. It's from 6:00 to 9:00. So come on down, bring the kids down. Everything is free. And enjoy yourself, enjoy yourself with the kids. Also, I just want to remind you about the, about the Leadership School. And it starts April the 11th, and it's nine classes. They feed you, and everything is free. So come on down and learn all about the city. And we get some good people who's, excuse me, who's going to be talking about the different departments, like Parks and Recreations, the Police Department, Fire Department. So there's going to be nine of them, nine sessions. So come on down and sign up and get an education. Thank you. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Youth Council Liaison Gettrist?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I would like to say, congratulations to Captain Camella. And I would also like to echo Meili, and because I also attended Washington, DC trip on March 10th through March 14th. It's really inspiring being there. And that was my second year going to Washington, DC. It was a really amazing trip. On Friday, March 9th, I did attend the Boards and Commission Dinner. I'd like to say thank you to all the staff who attended and who helped plan out the event. And there was an amazing performance by December 63. On Monday, March 19th, I went to the Community Services Center. They were doing arts and crafts, and they churned pine cones into bird feeders for the kids on spring break. And they will be continuing these arts and crafts throughout spring break for those who are on break. And that's all I have today, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I just want to call attention to an item that was on our consent agenda this evening. It really bears talking about for just a moment. We entered into a public-private partnership with ASU, Arizona's most innovative school, I think they call themselves that, and rightly so. It's called Peoria Forward. And the proposal is for them, or now the contractual deal, the program, is for them to bring out our entrepreneurial ecosystem in the city of Peoria. And so we are really looking forward to that. They are going to start with 22 actionable events this year alone. And so this is a chance for us to start a whole new incubator, if you will, of innovation and companies that currently might not know how to get started and commercialize themselves. And so this is a great opportunity for small business owners. So anybody who is watching this this evening, please realize that you have lots of help here at the city of Peoria. Just let us know what you need, and we are your partners. And with that, we are adjourned.